... This is outreach. The general plan is not the staff's document, but it's a committee document. And with that, we need to want the committee to gather what you have planned and meet that as possible. So starting back in December twenty fifteen, we created a general plan advisory group, a list of seventeen key pillars in the city, accounting line frames of interest, a vulnerable housing group, two commissioners, some youth, and everything all those there, and help us start to generate our policies. We also use common control to apply for outreach. We've been on neighbor associations, these are twenty-one enlisted environmental justice areas. We hit the youth, again, it's a twenty-five plan, it'll be around twenty-five years, but it will be used to send in social reading, we outreach them as well, again, they're economic out of document, not even shaped before. We fit them down, this could be around another fifty, that's where I'm trying to be like Mr. Homeout. Uh, we have many business groups and also community business organizations that are reaching, so there's forty-four different groups that we've reached over the last five years in this document. So some of the key topics that we found, key themes to general outreach as a more cultural restore, any community assets are special, we need to protect them and enhance the work we can. Land use, obviously, a great part of the document, I'm sure that it also, in addition to creating a land use plan, we can get some growth in the city, but also address healthy and ethnic lifestyles. The resources we have, we're sure that that will be distributed throughout the city, we sure most of the state will look at the city, and then education, and you have a prosperity or key critical to this document. As I mentioned, one of the key focuses in any general plan element is the land use element, it's our plan to grow. So what you see here in the blue is our list of all of our different plans we have right now that are in place, everything from harbor to personal to transit to downtown. So what we did here, which I made an effort here to take a look at some of the focus areas, areas that need some reinvestment and some new consideration for development, and we're trying to tie these into our current plans here. What you can see here in the ground, in the ground, is our fine key focus groups that we have in, uh, up here, one time we're down on in the past, one of these things, so you can see all these plans are trying to link in toward getting a defined, uh, development or plan for the city here. So this will be, uh, you know, we're back in the future, you're getting more control here, so we spoke with the plan here. So this is our next steps. So we recently released the EIR for general plan, as well as actual twelve elements themselves, those were released about two weeks ago. Then you're beginning to copy them shortly, and we're sending an email link as well as getting your, uh, digital version as well, the flashback. But that was out for review. Uh, the EIR takes forty-five days for review, which means mid-September, the public commentary will close, and I'll go back to analyze all the comments, and again, they're all responding to comments. So during that time, we're going to be reaching the planning commission and city council, and anybody else that wants to be very close, and we're going to give us a three minutes on the program, and we're going to, as well, talk again for August and September, and we're hoping to do is get this report this body here in, uh, fall of twenty, we're going to review. I discussed outreach a few minutes ago, uh, you may have realized that we had a couple of community workshops in the line early August, and over a hundred and twenty participants out there, some of their feedback was below there, particularly environmental justice, and the impacts that happened in the community development, community engagement, we should be doing this in languages, transparency, as well parts of culture, what was made from displacement, all the kind of key feedback topics that we got, at least one of that feedback trail, another, uh, in meeting, in asking virtual environment, remember that at the end of this month, there's some more left feedback than there was, let's speed again, which we're going to do, so we'll have another follow-up meeting with the committee on that one please. So that's kind of a big picture overview of the general plan update process, there's our webpage, email, phone number if you're ready to reach us, or should come in as a number, please, we're going to do twenty-four seven, if you have any questions you have later at night, please, there'll be you to answer your questions. And with that, that is my presentation, thank you very much. Uh, are there any questions that, uh, that you may have?
Yeah, I'm, that was Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor? Yes, go ahead, go over there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you for that presentation, and I didn't quite hear that, is this Bernie's the object manager on this, uh, company?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and so the, uh, residents, stakeholders that they want to reach him, is, uh, seven one four six six seven, choose seventy, what number, the way to get a hold of them?
That's one way, email as well, yes.
Okay, perfect, and my only request, um, yeah, I know you guys are going to bring along, um, the public, where everybody has a look at, the planning commission and council line, which is how to, um, now that we get closer to the hearing, that staff takes time to meet with the individual planning commissioners and the council members, so that, you know, because I know you guys have done a fantastic talk.
Um, Madam Secretary, will you start the meet, start the recording of this meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to call this regular planning commission meeting of August twenty-fourth to order. Uh, will we stand for the pledge allegiance, and, Vince, do you, Min, are you here?
I'm here, sir. All right, if you lead us in the pledge allegiance, we're good.
Yes. Everyone, please place hands over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, under God, individual, which liberty, which justice.
Thank you, Min. Okay, welcome. Madam Secretary, will you please all roll?
Yes. Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner Fan. Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Here.
Chair McLaughlin.
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Fan will not be attending tonight's meeting, Chair, you do have quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, uh, I would like to invite you to now describe the ways the public can access this virtual meeting.
Thank you, Chair. This meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube at www.youtube.com/cityofsantana-video/live, and to our website at www.santa-anna.org/CC/city-meetings. While the meeting is in progress, the public may provide a comment by phone. To comment by phone, please dial one-six-six-nine-nine-zero-zero-nine-one-two-eight. Enter meeting ID three-one-five-nine-six-five-one-four-nine, followed by pound. When prompted for a participant ID, just enter pound. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, please dial star nine. When the comment period is opened, I will call on you by the last three numbers listed on the caller ID. After you are called upon, you must press star six to unmute yourself. After you have unmuted yourself, please state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment. You will have three minutes, I will alert you when your time is up. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, we will now move on to public comments on non-agenda items. Uh, Secretary, does anyone wish to speak?
If you'd like to comment on a non-agenda item, please dial star nine now. We do not have anyone that wishes to comment on a non-agenda item.
Okay. Having said that, we'll close the public comments and we'll move on to the consent calendar. Moving on to the consent calendar, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the planning commission meeting of August tenth, two thousand twenty?
This is the commissioner of our motion.
Thank you, Jillicent.
Um, is, do I have a second? Commissioner Ken Nguyen, I'm second.
Commissioner Ken Nguyen, thank you, all right. Madam Secretary, will you take a roll, a roll vote on the minutes of August tenth?
Yes, Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morrissey.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero with Commissioner Fan absent.
Thank you, can I have a motion on the absence of Commissioner Ty Fan, of Viet Ty Fan this evening?
So moved.
Ken, thank you. Second Cynthia, okay, Madam Secretary, if you could take a roll call vote.
Yes. Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Morrissey.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero with Commissioner Fan absent.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now, uh, end the consent calendar and move on to the business calendar. Um, and, public hearings, public hearing protocol. I will now review the process for public hearings, so that everyone knows what to expect. A, staff will provide a presentation and answer questions from the commission. Next, a public hearing will be opened, the applicant will be given the opportunity to speak, limited to fifteen minutes. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment, limited to three minutes. The applicant will be given the opportunity to respond to the comments made by the public, limited to five minutes. The public hearing will then be closed. Discussion will return to the commission for formal action taken to approve, conditionally approve, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. Chair, please state your name and address, uh, state whether or not you support, oppose, or are neutral to this project. Your statement will, should include all pertinent facts within your knowledge, and avoid gossip, promotion, and repetition, a clear and concise, non-repetitive argument is most effective. This is the time and place to consider item number one, variance number twenty twenty-dash-oh-one, for pro, for the property located at seventeen oh-two North Main Street. Uh, please note, the decision on this matter is final unless appealed within ten days. Before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to this item? Can we, Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Uh, nothing to disclose, thank you.
Commissioner Nguyen?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Fan, uh, Commissioner Rivera?
Nothing.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Nothing at this time, thanks.
I have nothing to disclose at this time now, also, so, uh, if staff is ready to, uh, begin the presentation, Pedro, please, uh, start your presentation.
Good evening Chairman, and fellow commissioners. The first item for your consideration tonight is a request to allow a reduction in the required setbacks to facilitate a new commercial building for Farmers and Merchants Bank at seventeen oh-two North Main Street. The project's scope includes a demolition of a dilapidated building in order to construct the new bank building, which will include floor space for the bank itself and an additional bank-related tenant. The project would also include various site improvements, including new landscaping and twenty-six new parking stalls. The project area is located on the northwest corner of Main and Seventeenth Streets, it has a general plan designation of general commercial, and it's zoned C-one M.D., which stands for Community Commercial Museum District. The property is surrounded by a variety of commercial uses, and the new meta-housing adaptive reuse project to the south, which is a mixed-use commercial residential project. The next slides provide some site photos that show the condition of the building. As previously discussed, the project area is located in the museum district, which is considered a cultural center that includes the Bowers Museum and the Discovery Science Center, and which stretches north from Seventeenth Street towards the five freeway. Due to the prominent location, staff provided an enhanced site design review to ensure higher quality site design that focused on continuing the significant investment already happening at the intersection, and which can be seen with the meta-housing adaptive reuse project. The building is designed to sit closer to the primary street frontages, providing screening for the surface parking, and providing direct linkages to the public right-of-way, encouraging pedestrian activity and enhancing the urban form along street frontages. Um, as seen on the site plan, the new project will utilize an existing driveway along Main Street and an existing public alleyway for access. Future improvements for a southbound right turn lane would result in the widening of Main Street and a loss of approximately eighteen hundred square feet to the project site. Uh, therefore, the project will feature a nineteen-foot setback along Main Street and an eight-foot setback along Seventeenth Street. Once Main Street is widened to include the eleven-foot dedication for the right turn lane, the site will contain eight-foot setbacks along both street frontages, resulting in a seven-foot deficiency from the required setback standards of fifteen feet. Uh, the building floor plan is designed to accommodate two tenants, uh, the bank will be approximately forty-six hundred square feet in size, while the additional tenant space will be approximately thirteen hundred square feet in size. Uh, the bank will feature two entrance lobbies, one access from the parking area and the second access from Seventeenth Street. The bank will also provide a walk-up ATM, a night depository secure box, conference spaces, and an open office concept for patrons. The applicant did inform staff that the additional tenant area is intended for a bank-related As you can see in this revised rendering that was provided by the applicant, uh, the project will feature contemporary architecture with pre-cast concrete panels, a glass curtain wall system, dark bronze metal roof, metal canopies, and smooth, commercial-grade stucco finishes. In addition, the building will feature a twenty-three-foot tall brand wall, uh, along the north elevation, which will feature Farmers and Merchants Bank's F and M business logo, enhancing the building's contemporary design and street presence. The building's south elevation will be enhanced with a floor-to-ceiling gla, glass curtain wall system, featuring an evergreen glass consistent with Farmers and Merchants Bank's brand, uh, providing an overall enhanced design along the Main and Seventeenth Street intersection. Uh, the southwest corner of the building will feature minimalist features, but is proposed to be augmented with prominent landscaping, which will include, um, red crape myrtles, birds of paradise, gray sage, and harbor dwarf shrubs. The following slides provide a view of the building elevation designs. Um, here we can see the north and south elevation. The next slides provide, uh, highlights of the east and west elevation. As briefly discussed, uh, the building's architecture is proposed to be further enhanced with a rich landscape palette, uh, that provides low-water usage trees, shrubs, and ground cover. Uh, for example, Fan-Tex ash trees with, uh, a mature height of thirty-five feet in height will be provided as shade trees, uh, creating a more pleasant and attractive parking environment. Uh, both primary street frontages will be further enhanced with red crape myrtles, uh, that reach a mature height of fifteen feet. An additional tree, shrubs, and ground covers like Fan palm, New Zealand flax, harbor dwarf, and African boxwood will provide further screening, color, and variety to the landscape design and the overall site design. Uh, pursuant to the Santa Ana Municipal Code, a variance application can be granted for relief from development standards of the zoning district when it can be shown that there exists a special circumstance related to the property depriving it of uses that are afforded to other properties. Uh, in this particular case, uh, project mitigation measures identified for the one Broadway Plaza project require dedication of land on the project site for a southbound right turn lane. This will result in a loss of approximately eighteen hundred scre, uh, eighteen hundred square feet, and result in an eight-foot setback on both street frontages, uh, resulting in a seven-foot deficiency for the required setbacks. Approval of the setback variance enables the project to be designed to ensure safe circulation for all types of vehicles, and to meet the city's off-street parking requirements and site circulation standards. Without the reduction in setbacks, the project would need to be redesigned, resulting in several impacts to the feasibility of the site's development. These impacts would include a loss of over half its, half of its parking spaces, a reduction in a drive aisle lane width, uh, which would create onsite circulation hazards, and, um, result in a smaller building footprint that would reduce the building's interior floor The parcel's compact size and the eleven-foot dedication requirement justify the applicant's request for a landscape setback variance and front and side yard setback variances. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve variance number twenty twenty-dash-one as condition. That concludes staff's presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Pedro, um, do any of the commissioners have a question, I'll do a roll. Um, Commissioner Garcia, any questions of staff?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Uh, yes, I have a couple of questions, uh, sorry, I wasn't able to, having some problems with my, uh, T F reader, I was wondering, on the site plan, uh, it looks like there's, um, maybe some electrical switchgear or something like that on the south elevation, and so, two things I'm wondering about, screening of any, uh, uh, equipment on the building, as well as on the site, such as, uh, mechanical equipment on the roof, and, um, electrical switchgear on the ground, and it, the, I noticed it's fire sprinkler, so there would be a backflow preventer? Or, uh, fire department? Um, uh, I guess, you know, the pipes that are above ground, the backflow typically are quite visible, so I was wondering if those were identified on the plan?
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, yes, so, as part of the proposed site plan design, any sort of backload devices, any utility devices are proposed to be located within landscape areas, uh, which would provide the required screening, uh, which is required by our code. Uh, any sort of mechanical rooftop equipment is also, um, required to be screened, um, if the existing parapet height would not provide the screening, additional screening, uh, devices would be required, but at this time, the, uh, building is designed to provide any sort of screening necessary for mechanical equipment.
Hey, thank you.
Any other questions, uh, Commissioner Morrissey?
Uh, no questions at this time, thanks.
Commissioner Nguyen?
No question, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
Yes, I have a quick question. Um, uh, across the street, the, uh, the building that's across the street, uh, right, right, just, just, uh, north of the project, does that also, um, have that reduced setback as well? I know it's very close to the sidewalk, is this going to be kind of like matching a similar style from across the street, or?
Just one second.
Asia?
Commissioner Rivera, could you clarify which building? I do have the aerial out here in front of me, um, so are you talking about directly north to the project site, um, I guess where the cursor is showing?
I'm sorry, not for, I'm, I'm sorry, directly south, uh, just on the other side of Seventeenth.
Okay, the, the multifamily housing project, yeah, no, that's not going to be affected by the south by, the southbound right turn, uh, as far as I'm, I know, there isn't any sort of proposed, um, improvements along that side of the intersection.
Oh, okay, because I, I, I thought there was, uh, there was also the reduced setback on that side, I felt like the, the building was very close to the street, so I didn't really sure if it was just kind of matching the same, uh, the same look.
Uh, Commissioner Rivera, there is, uh, existing conditions for that building to have a reduced setback, that those are kind of, um, the building was built way before any sort of setback requirements, um, so, whether the design is intended to kind of match that, um, not sure, but it is as a result of the, that dedication requirement, that the building kind of is located towards the front, and it's also actually consistent with our citywide design guidelines that require kind of buildings to be as close as possible to primary frontages to kind of enhance the urban, uh, experience and then provide direct public linkages to the right-of-way.
Okay, yeah, I thought so, because I remember seeing that it was close to the, to the sidewalk, so I just felt like it was, this was almost kind of matching the same thing, but, okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Yes, thank you, Chair. My questions are currently at that site, um, are there two businesses there right now?
The commercial building, um, is vacant, as far as I know, but it used to host, um, uh, multi-tenant businesses there, so there, it used to be Liberty Insurance, uh, offices, you know, uh, lawyers, real estate, so at, at one point, it did have, uh, multi-tenants at the location, but it's currently vacant.
And when it had multi-tenants, did we ever receive parking complaints?
Not that I know of, Commissioner Leo, um...
Commissioner Leo, this is Vince Fregoso, and I've been, you know, at the city over thirty years, and we've never received a parking complaint from that location out there.
Okay, because I'm really excited that they're willing to renovate, if we will make that corner look just a hundred percent better, um, I just confirm that, with it becoming a bank and having a second tenant, will there be enough parking if they're no longer going to have street parking?
Yeah, Commissioner, uh, or Vice Chair, we don't see as a problem out there, as you know, banking nowadays, a lot of it's going online, and, and there's less trips to banks now, so we've been, uh, that was one of the things that we analyzed and took in, in consideration for that site. Um, the second use that's going to go in there is likely to be an office type of use that's for a similar and related to the bank, such as like a mortgage company, for instance, almost doesn't generate a lot of traffic either, so, um, we've analyzed that, we don't see an issue with, uh, parking at this location.
So how many parking spots will they have available after the renovation?
Commissioner, there is, uh-
Twenty-six, Pedro?
Twenty-six, correct.
Twenty-six, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Contreras Leo, um, okay, I've got a few questions myself, um, one is, in, in, when you said second building, um, the, what we see in the rendering at this point in time is just one building for Farmers and Merchants, correct?
That's correct.
So where does the second building come into play? Is that the one that's behind there, which is, I think, Smile Care or something like that?
Uh, Chairman, I might have misspoken, uh, it did mean second tenant, uh, the building is one building, uh, which the primary use would be for the bank, but there's about-
Got it.
-thirteen hundred square feet for the additional tenant that's related to the bank.
Got it, so it's, it's, we're, again, focusing in on the building and everything else, um, and, but the two, two occupants of the bill, of the current building that's listed here, got it. Okay, um, the second thing is, is that I'm assuming, and maybe this is not right, but I'm assuming that, um, if we have twenty-six parking spaces, we will be, um, that will be a, a lot-type parking area, it's not going to be open twenty-four hours a day like it is today?
Chairman, there isn't, um, as part of these plans set, there isn't a plan to completely close that, uh, lot area, um, I'd have to defer to the applicant, um, who is on the line with us today to see if there is any intention to close off the lot, um, after hours.
This is Drew DeHoda, Santak Architecture, and I'm the designer, the architect on the project, um, the, the design as currently is, the site plan, we do not intend to add, to add any gates, um, if that seems to be a requirement, we can consider and work with the staff around it. Uh, what, what is the, the concern that is driving this, um, question?
Well, the concern is, the, the concern is, is that if you leave the parking lot open, um, you know, it doesn't matter where and what, how you're in the city, uh, people will tend to park, as an example, right now, down the street from there, uh, is, is the school's first, uh, federal credit, credit union, and their parking lot is open in the front because of the ATM machine, twenty-four hour ATM machine, there's probably thirty cars that are parked in the front parking lot every day, and it's people that live around the area that don't have a place to park. So it, I'm just bringing that to your attention and saying that that might be something to consider, it's up to you, I'm not, if there's no requirement to do that, it's just a concern that I've got, and I, I felt it was necessary to just say something.
Thank you, I, I appreciate the concern, thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right. Second item is, is that, you know, as it's been noted and discussed, I'm still a little concerned on this dedicated right turn. The rendering that we have right now doesn't have that dedicated right turn put into it, but it notes that there's a certain amount, it's 19 feet. Is that 19 feet from the edge of the building to the curb? Or how is that...what's the 19 feet?
So, the proposed...excuse me, the proposed landscaping setback area is going to be from the edge of the building to the back of the right of way. So, that without the right turn lane would be 19 feet. So, there's an 11-foot dedication that would be gone when the right turn lane goes in. So, at the end, there's going to be eight foot from the edge of the wall to the ultimate property line or the ultimate right of way.
Now, is this 18...is this dedicated right-hand turn, is that going to be done in conjunction with the building of this bank?
The anticipated right turn lane, staff anticipates coming in within a year, but it's not going to be directly constructed at the same time as the project, well, the farmers and merchants.
Is there any particular reason why we wouldn't attempt to do something like that?
Chairman, I may have to defer to our planning manager, Vince, since he was a case planner for the One Broadway Plaza. But I do believe it's just because the requirement was on the current owner of the project site, and then the new ownership, farmers and merchants, wouldn't be subject to those requirements. So, I think there may be some sort of private agreement to split the work.
Thank you, Pedro. Mr. Chairman, yeah, Pedro is essentially correct. This mitigation measure is a triggered by the One Broadway Plaza project. This project itself does not trigger the dedication requirement. So, ideally, we'd like to get that done at the same time, and I'm sure the bank would too, as it minimizes the impacts to the bank's operations. But the One Broadway Plaza, yeah, One Broadway is not ready to move forward yet, and so One Broadway is not willing to put in that lane at this time. So, it'll come a little bit later on, hopefully within the next year.
Well, I think we should do our best to figure out how we can do it simultaneously, because it just...it would lessen the impact, you know, the bank's in place, it's open, and then all of a sudden, they're going to be ripping up the street. Doesn't make sense. That's my own opinion. But the...okay, so, next item that I looked at, as Pedro pointed out, this is the museum district, and I have a little bit of concern on the corner with regards to the trees, the foliage, and everything else. You know, it might be...it might be nice, but I don't know how much people are going to walk over it, walk through it, and that might be a problem in and of itself. Again, museum district, one thought that I had was maybe there's a way in which instead of putting plants and trees around the front of it, on that corner, maybe a piece of art or something like that that would be indicative of the museum district or indicative of the artist facilities across the street, because it is, you know, we are trying to develop that corridor, and it's been long, a long time since we started developing it as a museum district. And I know there's been attempts here and there. That might be just one way of just providing another entry way of saying, hey, you're coming into a artist, a museum district-like environment. So, just thinking about that and thinking out loud, would like to see if there was any consideration on something like that, because I know on other projects, we've always...larger apartment projects and stuff like that, we always try to get some of the artwork in from the surrounding art, artist village and artist community. This might be a great time to do something with the people across the street that have just been in the co-op and readaptive use building. Just a thought. I guess the other thing is, is that when looking at the...I want to say, when looking at the south elevation, when looking at the south elevation, we've got that wide area that's open space, the wall of the back end of the bank, is there going to be trees or any kind of vegetation in front of that, in front of that wall?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, the updated rendering, which was provided by the applicant today, is more reflective of the preliminary landscape plan that they have shown. Adjacent to that southwest corner, they have proposed three red grape myrtles, which, again, reach about 15 feet in height. The overall height of the building is about 23 feet max, so it would provide a good deal of screening on that elevation.
Yeah, I mean, I think the concern, the concern that several have voiced is that it could be, it could be a nice target for graffiti if it was left wide open. So, if there's going to be vegetation in front of it, then possibly that will take away from any graffiti or attempts to do graffiti. I think we have to take into consideration, it is in that environment of the museum district, and just leverage it a little bit. That's my thoughts.
This is Lulea, again. I'm sorry, I just wanted to respond to your concern, Commissioner. I understand that corner. First, I'd like to talk about the Main Street and 17th Street corner. Your concern about enhancing that more of a, with the hardscape, the way I understood it. Our main direction for the design has been, due to the fact of the dedication already and the minimal landscape setback there of eight feet by eight feet, that corner really doesn't allow much room for any sort of enhanced plaza or monument, so to say, on the exterior. The bank user, and I mean, in our previous discussion and during the design development, we had considered an opportunity to expose the art, the local art, on the interior of the bank, and they're open to working, you know, we were open to working with the planning on that. But we just believe that the exterior, the location as it is, the location of the building as it is, and with all the limitations around, it really doesn't provide much opportunity to, for further plaza enhancement. And then the second, the second consideration about the southwest corner of the tenant, the current landscape design, really, the intention was here to sort of cover the wall. So, the crepe myrtles does do the wall covering, but also the lower plants around that corner do have the intention to be not very friendly and not very easily walkable. So, I think that that's more of an aggressive landscape I've taken into consideration. If you...I'm not, and I don't have access to the live feed, but if you're able to see the recent rendering, if you still have concerns, I think we're willing to work with the staff to adjust the landscape around that corner.
Yeah, it would be nice to be able to have seen that tonight, if there was, if there was dramatic change in that, for sure. I mean, I think, as I said, we need to emphasize with this facility that it is part of the museum district, and that's what, that's the essence of what I'm trying to put forward here. Okay, any other questions? Do any of the commissioners have any other questions of staff at this point in time?
Mr. Chair, I have another comment.
Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I'd like to voice the same concern you have about that south elevation. The crepe myrtles, is that a...from the renderings, different than the ones in our packet? So, is that...are those in the right of way, are those street trees, or are they on the subject property? It's hard to tell from the rendering.
Yes, and actually, maybe the landscape plan will provide a better view of that. Those three trees are proposed on the private property, so they're not street trees. So, those would be in conjunction with the low-level shrubs, the birds of paradise that the architect was kind of referring to. In combination, they're meant to provide that additional screening, and as she mentioned, not be very friendly for pedestrians to kind of access. And Commissioner, if I may also remind the planning commission about our property maintenance agreement condition of approval as well. I don't recall exactly if we have any sort of language about the turnaround time for any sort of like graffiti, if it's 24 or 48 hours. But we do have a property maintenance agreement condition that we are having the applicant sign and kind of keep on file, that says that they're going to maintain the property, you know, in the best condition possible. So, if that helps alleviate some of those concerns.
Yeah, and so, the other question I had was on the finish. It's a...is the farmers and merchants marquee, that's precast concrete, I understand? Is that...how's that finished? Is that painted or sandblasted or...
You're referring to this elevation here?
Yes.
Lulea, do you have a response?
It's our precast finish, yes. They are precast and prefinished panels that already have an anti-graffiti finishing done.
So, they're not...if they do get graffiti, it can't be painted, it would have to be washed off or refinished somehow? Is that...I'm just trying to ask this.
Maintenance-wise, I understand your concern.
Maintenance-wise, is that what that would just like, if it got graffiti repaired?
Honestly, I'm going to have to look into the long-term maintenance of that. As it is right now, we have specifically looked for an anti-graffiti finish and as much protection as you can provide as it is. And if that happens anyways, I believe I'll have to provide more information to the staff about how would that make, the long-term maintenance would be. I do not have that information.
Okay. I'd like to ask one question myself, again. On that dedicated right-hand turn, when that is set up, the assumption is that we're adding a lane that's going to be about 100 to 120 feet in length, and then the right-hand turn will be into the existing far right-hand lane? There will be no, there will be no front of the building right-hand dedicated lane? It's just going into the intersection of 17th and Main? Is that correct?
Chairman, I'm not sure if I understand your question. Are you maybe referring to how far in the dedication is going to come in and if it will affect 17th Street?
I'm just saying, on the, heading southbound on Main Street, there will be an additional lane that's going to be put in there as a dedicated right-hand turn lane.
Correct.
That right-hand turn lane will, that right-hand turn lane, dedicated right-hand turn lane, will turn into the existing far right-hand lane. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, there's no right-hand dedicated lane on the south side of the bank?
You mean along 17th Street?
Correct.
No.
Okay. All right. Do any of the other commissioners have any questions of staff? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Pedro. Madam Secretary, have we received any correspondence or written communication on this item?
No, written communication has been received on this item.
Okay, thank you. With that said, the public hearing is now open. Would the applicant like to speak on the matter?
Hi, this is Leslie Gentile with Farmers Emergence Bank, 302 Pine Avenue, Long Beach, 90802. We have no further comments on the package and the conditions of approval. We've been working on this now for about a year, so we're very anxious to break ground and get the new building started.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions of the applicant at this point in time? Commissioner Garcia?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Morrissey?
No, I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Commissioner Nguyen?
No question, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
No question, thank you.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
No questions, thanks.
Okay, I have no questions at this time, so, Madam Secretary, we will now open it for public comments.
If you'd like to speak on this... If you'd like to speak on this matter, please dial *9 now. We'll wait a few seconds to see if anyone... We do have one caller.
Okay.
We do have one caller. Unfortunately, the number is not appearing on our end. It looks like a private number. But if you caller would like to speak on this item for the Farmers Emergence Bank, please press *6 to unmute yourself, then state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment.
Yes, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I haven't done this before. My name is Mary Whitenick. I am a resident of 1404 North Tustin in Santa Ana, and I would like to speak in support of the project. It seems like a good project. It seems like a good use of the parcel. It seems like an improvement over the existing circumstances. So, just as a citizen in the city, I speak in support of it.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Thank you. How do I mute myself again?
*6.
Yes, we muted you. Thank you, Mary. Oh, Chair, we do have another caller.
Okay.
Last caller with the last three numbers, 477. Please press *6 to unmute yourself. State your name, your position, and your comment. Caller with the last three numbers of 477, please press *6 to unmute yourself.
Yeah, this is Dale Helvig, resident of Ward 3, and I'd like to say, I'm really happy that this project is going in. It looks like a very good improvement over what's existing there right now. I do have a couple of comments, though. Stucco exterior seems to age a lot quicker, so I'd hope that they would put in something a little bit more durable and like some of the other commissioners mentioned, that would be easier to maintain over the course of time. The other thing is, just as a reference point, the parking at the Bank of America down on 17th near Tustin Avenue has roughly 63 spots. Bigger bank, maybe, older times, and they just had the property and can do that. But one of the things that they did do recently is they installed some electric vehicle charging stations, and I don't know if that's something that was mandated by some directive from the state, or they just decided to do it as a good neighbor. I don't know if farmers and merchants had anything like that in mind when they installed their parking. The other thing, I don't understand this right turn lane and the setbacks. Is the eight-foot setback off the sidewalk closest to the building, or is it off the curb from Main Street? So, hopefully, you guys clarify that for us novices that aren't familiar with that. Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Okay, Chair, there is...
Madam Secretary, can you?
No, there is no one else who wishes to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. Oh, hang on. Does the applicant want to, at this point in time, say anything else based on the questions asked or comments in the public?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. This is Lulea Hoda again, and Dale, thanks for the comments. I appreciate your great feedback. I wanted to touch base on... I wanted to touch base on, on, on at least two comments that you had about the EV charger. The current design, the current site plan as it is, we do propose, we do propose one electrical vehicle truck at the top, at the, at the northwest edge of the building as part of being called future requirement, but we, this will be provided at the time of the, the bank opening. The second consideration, I understand, I understand the concerns, then if you're looking at the rendering, you have access to the, to the current design. The majority of, the majority of the building is covered in glass and, and the featured wall with a, with a precast concrete. And there's a portion of the building that has stucco, that is correct, but that's mostly the tenant. And as we discussed previously, this is covered with a landscape, the, the main portion of it, and also the stucco is, it's, it's, will be, will have anti-gravity paint. So I hope this will help elevate your concerns. But in general, this was designed, it's, it's, it has been thoroughly thought of and gone through ma, major considerations. So we're really hoping that it will meet everyone's expectations.
Okay, thank you. Any, any additional comments before we close the public hearing? Hearing none, public hearing is now closed. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Garcia, do you have any further questions or discussion on this particular item?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Morrissey?
Yeah, I'd echo the previous comments, I'm really excited about this project as well. It's really going to be a great improvement to that corner. So I, I'm just looking forward to it breaking ground and I'm glad Farmers and Merchants have decided to open shop here at that corner. Thank you, Sam. I, I think the, the one thing in our resolution we should include is, you know, we talked about providing space for the, the artist to display their work, so I understand the restrictions on the corner, but maybe some space on the interior would be a good place to do that.
Good, good, good idea. Commissioner, Commissioner Morrissey, any other comments?
Um, no, not at this time.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Um, yes. Based on the economic development benefit for the, for the project to the city and would also would generate additional tax revenue for the city, create more jobs and, and better service of our community, I would like to motion for approval of the, uh, very number 2020, that's your own ask condition.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Nguyen. Does anybody, would anybody like to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Vice Chair Contreras Leo, second that. Let me just, for the sake of discussion, continue on with Commissioner Rivera, do you have anything else that you would like to discuss with regards to this item?
Yes, real quick, I'd just like to echo that. Also, I'm excited about the project and I totally agree with trying to use, because it is in the museum district, try to use some type of artists or something that we can do, something to display our, whether it be inside or outside, but something along those lines. I don't know if that would be something we would put through conditions or how that would go, but I think that would be great. Just be a good, good use of, of that, that area as well. But totally, I, I love the design and everything and it looks good, I'm excited to see it.
Thank you, Commissioner Rivera. Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
I completely agree with what you brought up earlier Mark about, and everybody's echoing it, about the museum district feel and look. And I believe when the Hampton Inn down at the bottom by the freeway was coming in, they were also trying to keep the same feel of the museum district and were putting the same type of trees as the, along the corridor as the Bowers to keep, to make it feel like it was the actual corridor. I don't know if that's an option here to take a look at. It could be the beginning of it, since we have that artist housing development there as well, I think it would be appropriate to stay consistent with the other things that are coming in, if they stayed along those same lines with the different foliage they're putting in, if we can do something like that.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Contreras Leo. I guess what I would like to do is ask staff at this point in time, I think we have a number of items that we've identified here as would like to include in, in our approval of this project. How do we go about taking notice of those? As an example, art, you know, art inside or outside the facility? We heard Farmers Merchants talk about inside the facility, we've talked about outside the facility. I think that, you know, the electric charger, you know, that's a great thing that's happening there. There's other, there's other considerations that have been voiced by the different commissioners. How do we go about taking and recording that?
Thank you, Chairman. I think at this time, I'd maybe suggest that we allow maybe the applicant Leslie to, to respond to some of those suggestions to see if the applicant is amenable to some of those, especially the art component, you know, whether it's feasible to do it in that corner or if it's something that maybe they can do within the interior of their building. So that, that might be a good starting point.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, Farmers and Merchants Bank has an art program at each of our locations where we do represent local community art, art that's based on the local community. So every one of our branches has, this is a park or the harbor or whatever is related to that community in the artwork. And I can send some information on that, some examples. We are open to displaying art as long as it, it works with the layout and the design that we have. We are concerned about any large piece of art on the exterior, primarily on the corner if that is something that is required. We'd like to have more information because this is the first that we've heard about this request. With the turn lane, once the turn lane is installed, there really won't be much shade. So it, it, to have something on the interior, maybe in that corner lobby is something we can consider for sure. But we do have an art program that is part of our branding in all of our locations.
Right, I, I appreciate that. What we were, what we are essentially suggesting is that right, the south side of, of 17th, on that corner between, of Main and, and, and south side of 17th, it is a art, it's going to be an art gallery, it's an artist co-op or condominiums. And so there's going to be a lot of live work inside of that facility and it's right across the street, that's one of the comments. We have the Bowers down the street, which obviously is another opportunity. And then there are, you know, further opportunities that can be made. And your program, obviously, you take that into consideration and that's a good thing. I'm just looking at, you know, art on the inside, outside. I think the other thing that the, we're looking about, looking at trying to understand is that I'd like to see how the, the vegetation is going to be impacted by that dedicated right-hand lane, because there may not be land whatsoever to put any kind of planting on that. I'm, I'm concerned, I'm also concerned that, you know, you're going to start the project and, you know, we, we are going to rip up the street a year later or two years later to put in that right-hand turn lane. Like to see some, some effort made to look at trying to do that together. I think the comments brought in about the chargers, I think that's great that you guys are going to be doing that and that would be fantastic to see. And as, as was pointed out by one of the speakers, it's, you know, a lot of the banks, Bank of America is starting to do it in a lot of different areas and obviously it's going to be the norm moving forward. I just, again, Ben, do we have enough information and the list of things that were brought up in the discussions by the commissioners and by the public? Do we have that all kind of documented at this point in time?
So what we, what I've heard, two things, one is to work with the applicant for an art display either inside or outside, and leave it up to the applicant and staff to work together to make provision for that. And then secondly is to have more detailed information regarding the right-hand turn lane and try to coordinate with the Public Works agency as much as feasible on the construction of the project and the turn lane, but not to prohibit this project from moving forward. Ready?
Director Men, if I may?
Yes.
This is to address Chairman's concern and actually something that just till now came up, that, this is in relation to the, the request for exterior artwork. Unfortunately, due to the dedication, that's, that's one restriction. The city does have what's called a corner visibility area that's about 25 feet in either direction. So at this intersection, excuse me, let me go back to the landscape plan. At the intersection, after the dedication, there's going to be about maybe six or eight feet of space available for where the commission's requesting art piece. Within that area, that's, that's located within the traffic visibility area, so anything within that can exceed the height of 30 inches. And that's for safety reasons. We want to make sure that traffic can visibly see across and make sure there isn't any sort of accident. So due to that, I, I would suggest that if the planning commission does wish to pursue the art component, that they maybe consider, you know, having the conversation about the interior space. It wouldn't work necessarily on that corner because of those restrictions. And then also to address, I think, one comment from the chairman about landscaping within the right of way before the dedication, there is temporary landscaping proposed. So on this landscaping plan, you'll see kind of more of where the permanent landscaping is going to be with the trees. But there is going to be ground covered and just little shrubs that would be in place. Meanwhile, you know, whenever the right turn does come into place, so it would be kind of treated to, to work with the existing landscape palette that is being proposed permanently. It's just that area would be eliminated once the dedication comes in and the right turn lane comes in.
Okay. All right. Um, I, you know, I, I think we've covered a lot of the questions, I just want to make sure that we've captured the, the comments of everybody and staff can review those with the applicant and we can get some feedback with regards to that possibly in the next week? Is that possible, Ben?
Commissioner, Chairman, I'm not sure, are you, are you requesting that we meet with the applicant before the commission makes a decision on the item?
No, I'm not saying that at all.
Okay.
I think we have a sec, we have a, we have a motion and we have a second at this point in time.
I see, I see.
Just add, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Morrissey?
We add a, I guess you'd call it a friendly rider to the motion to implement a local artist display program and just let staff and the applicant work out what that is and if, you know, maybe it's a wall inside the bank or whatever they decide.
Right, I, I think, I, I think that we need to explore and make sure, I personally think we need to explore and figure out how we can, how we can make that right-hand turn lane come, come together with the construction. It just seems like it's going to be crazy to lay this all out and then possibly six months or a year later rip it all out at the corner. Just a thought of trying to do it all at once.
Um, Chairman, I, I would formally the condition to allow the applicant and staff to work with Public Works to coordinate that, but not let that be a condition that would stop the applicant from moving forward with their construction. But the One Broadway project, if, if, you know, if and when it gets constructed, that's when that funding is going to be in place. Currently, the funding is not there to do. So until, until, until when the One Broadway project is put into construction, that intersection could stay at that point in time, you know, in the scene.
Yeah, but I think, I mean, you, you might have to look this up, but down on Broadway, the corner of Broadway and 17th Street, when the gas station, the New World Gas Station came into that corner, there was also a One Broadway requirement to have a dedicated right-hand turn lane on Broadway. And that was implemented at the time when the gas station was put in. So I'm just, I'm just saying that it's not something that hasn't been done before. And I think, you know, Vince has been around for 30 years, he'll probably remember that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Commissioner, Madam Chairman, I do remember that. And the circumstances are a little bit different because that was a gas station that had a lot more traffic than the bank. The actual gas station itself triggered the dedication requirements for that project, whereas this one, the traffic trips did not trigger a need for the dedication on the, the bank site. So those are the two differences on those two.
Okay, but I mean, it was done simultaneously because of the, the need to do that, but it was also a mitigation project for One Broadway.
Yes, what happened, essentially One Broadway got a, got a free, uh, free mitigation was taken care of on their behalf, yeah.
They got a free pass, I, I'm.
They got a free pass on that case.
Yeah, and so, um, just, just as a point, I mean, that's all I'm asking, and not to delay or anything else, but I think we ought to take a look at that and see if it is a feasible thing that can be done. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Any other comments that we have from any of the commissioners at this point in time? Hearing none, what we'll do is we will ask, Madam Secretary, would you please take a roll call vote on this item?
Uh, yes, and for a point of clarification, Commissioner Nguyen, I'm sorry, Commissioner Morrissey, I heard you make a friendly amendment to the recommended action to implement an artist's display program. Commissioner Nguyen, do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
And now I will go ahead and conduct the roll call vote. Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Aye.
And Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero with Commissioner Fan absent.
I thank you and I thank the participants from Farmers Merchants and, and just to echo what was said by other people, this does look like a great project and it will clean up that corner and, and provide a much more visual atmosphere than, than we have today there on that corner. So appreciate your efforts to take care of this and, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay. This is the time and place to consider item number two, conditionally used permit number 2020-17 and variance, variance number 2020-03 for the property located at 1619, 1621, and 1623 East Edinger Avenue. Please note the decision on this matter is, is final unless appealed within 10 days. Before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regards to this item? Commissioner Garcia?
Nothing to disclose.
Initiate, Commissioner Morrissey?
No, I don't have anything, thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Nguyen?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
Nothing, thank you.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Nothing to disclose.
I have nothing to disclose myself. With that said, Jerry, are you ready to present?
Yes, good evening, Chairman and Commissioner.
Yes, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, can you guys all hear me?
We can hear you.
So as mentioned briefly, this next item is on a condition use permit and variance application for an existing proposed expansion of an industrial health clinic at 1619, 1621, and 1623 East Edinger Avenue. Next slide. The applicant, the Central Health Services is requesting to expand an existing industrial clinic, which is currently utilizing tenant space at 1619 into two adjacent tenant suites at 1621 and 1623. In addition to that, the applicant's requesting a variance application to allow a reduction in required off-street parking. As part of the application, the applicant is also proposing some interior modifications, such as construction of new partition walls, as well as the construction of new ADA compliant restrooms. In addition to that, the applicant is proposing to conduct some exterior alterations to the property consisting of restructuring the existing parking lot, as well as constructing a brand-new trash enclosure and adding new landscaping along the property frontage along Edinger Avenue. The hours of operation being proposed for now are 24 hours, seven days a week, for the urgent care services that are being provided. In addition to that, physical therapy is provided Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Next slide. The project site is located on the north side of Edinger Avenue. And it's highlighted in red as shown on the aerial view. The germ plant land use destination of the property is industrial and the zoning of the property is light industrial. And the site is surrounded by other similar commercial industrial uses to the northeast, south, and west. Next slide. So this is the proposed site plan. Edinger Avenue is to your right and north is to your left. So as mentioned, the current tenant utilizes 1619 and will be expanding into 1621 and 1623. They're providing a total of 40 onsite parking spaces. The proposed trash enclosure is located on the top left corner. And as mentioned previously, the applicant is also proposing to install a five-foot landscape planter along the property frontage along Edinger Avenue. Next slide. So this is the proposed floor plan for the subject tenant. As mentioned, they are expanding to 1621 and 1623, with the majority of the work being conducted within 1621, which includes the construction of partition walls to create sub-offices or exam rooms, as well as construction of an ADA restroom. Next slide. With that, the proposed expansion would not be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding community. The use is consistent with the adjacent commercial and industrial uses. Lastly, the clinic will continue to provide service to its resident and its workers. Up, next slide. As mentioned before, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow for reductions in off-street parking. In order to provide for analysis, the applicant did provide a parking demand analysis that was conducted by Overland Traffic Consultants. Based on the study, it was determined that at peak hours, a total of 37 parking stalls will be needed to supply the demands of the clinic, as well as the adjacent manufacturing use. With that, the site will contain three additional parking spaces. So in conclusion, the combined 40 parking spaces that are being proposed should be sufficient to meet the demands of all of the uses on site. Next slide. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve condition use permit number 2020-17 as conditioned and approve variance number 2020-03 as conditioned. That concludes staff presentation, so I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Commissioner Garcia, do you have any questions of staff?
I do, thank you. You mentioned, Jerry, that there were, that the study conducted on the parking found that 37 parking spaces would suffice at peak demand. Is that reflecting the anticipated expansion and the anticipated number of individuals that would be serviced? Or the existing peak demand?
Chairman, I'm sorry, Commissioner Garcia, that is taken into consideration the proposed expansion, as well as the proposed number of employees. So based on the study, the peak hours would occur between 9:00 a.m. and then noonish and then 6:00 p.m.
And my second question is, looking at exhibit four, at 224 of your staff report, it looks like, you know, while the building seems to be, you know, maintained, that would this be a good opportunity to ask for a face lift of some sort? And, you know, we've got a lot more details on the landscaping plans for the item that we just reviewed, wondering why you don't have that here to give us a little bit more flavor of what, you know, what we're really going to be looking at and how we can maybe provide some feedback and guidance on how that can be improved if necessary.
Commissioner Garcia, the building itself was recently repainted and the awnings were also recently refreshed. But certainly, this body does have the authority to require some additional exterior improvements. As part of the application, staff does analyze what the applicant's requesting. And we try to make sure that whatever improvements we're requesting are in line with staff proposal. We did include exhibit, I believe, number seven, which is the proposed conceptual landscape plan. So for this particular property, there currently isn't any landscape along the frontage of Edinger. So the minimum we were able to obtain from the applicant was a five-foot landscape planter, which will be used for outplanting of shrubs. In addition to that, they're proposing installing four 24-inch box trees along that frontage.
And, you know, I am a visual person, and so I really like the colored elevations from your prior. So I could see this, but I can't, it doesn't help me visualize it. For some reason, I feel like a five-foot planter isn't enough for the amount of, you know, the size and scope of this particular building. And so, I don't know, I guess I'm looking to you to see what else can we request to beautify this space? It seems to me that this is a really good opportunity to do that. And as it, as I see it now, I feel like it's not, it's not enough.
Right, to keep in mind, Commissioners, that we also have to take into consideration other development standards. So the only, the reason why they're closing five feet, that's because that's the bare minimum that they were able to put in there. Take into consideration the backup requirement that the stalls are required to provide. Normally, these aisles tend to be 23 foot in terms of backup. And in addition to that, we also need to take into consideration the ADA accessibility path of travel. So with that, they cannot have a wider landscape planter along the frontage of Edinger.
Okay, that's it for now, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morrissey.
Yeah, I guess I have one question up, up hand. So what happens if the operation changes in any way that, and they start to require much more parking? What are our options at that point? I understand, based on the plan that presented, you know, the parking is, the requirement is 37, but the way healthcare industry is, things can change pretty rapidly and it could be a totally different count in the near future.
Mr. Morrissey, if any operations would drastically change, the applicant would have to bring forward a new condition use permit application or an amendment to this condition use permit before this body for approval. In addition to that, let's say we have additional, an additional operating wants to take into consideration occupying that current industrial site to a more intensive use. At that time, we will ask for a parking analysis. And for some reason, if they're not able to comply with those current parking demands, then they will have to apply for a variance application.
I guess, how, what's the definition of an operation change? If they were just, if it was still a health clinic? And the types of services they offered changed the amount of traffic, is that an operation change? They're still offering health services, but more, it, there are services that generate more traffic. Is that considered a, something that would have to come before the planning commission?
Correct, it would have to be to an amendment to the variance, as well as the condition use permit application.
Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Commissioner Nguyen.
Yes, I'd like to know how many parking spaces required by client with that total number of square footage of this particular medical facility?
Commissioner Nguyen, the required parking spaces is 48 parking spaces for both the clinic, as well as for the manufacturing use. I'm sorry, right, 54.
54 required by client. How many is it applicant will be provide for this particular permit?
The applicant's proposing a total of 40 parking spaces on site.
So the short, about roughly, approximately about 14 parking space for this site?
That is correct.
All right, thank you, that's all I need to know, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera.
Yes, I'd like to show what Commissioner Garcia brought up. I believe this is a good opportunity to do some type of cosmetic improvements on this, on this, on the building. And I think that, you know, something along the line, whether it would be, whether it's, you know, the landscape or anything like that, anything we can do to maybe improve the, the look of the building, I think would be, would be great. And I definitely think that right now would be a good time to be able to add something like that on. Other than that, I don't have any.
Okay. Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Thank you. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues as well. One planter, they're taking over everything, even if they did planters every other post. I mean, it would look great, I mean, it would look better. The sidewalk there has that forest tree, but I'm imagining that it's not impossible for flower beds or something to be placed. Our community deserves, I think, more. It's, it's just kind of there. And number two, I have an issue with giving up that many parking spots, you know. In our city, people are fighting for parking. Can you explain to me why they want to give up 14 spots?
Commissioner Contreras Leo, the site currently only has 40 parking spaces. So in order for them to expand into the adjacent units, they either need to provide additional parking or apply for a variance. So based on that, the applicant did decide to provide a parking demand analysis that was provided and conducted by a traffic firm, who has affirmed that the combined uses and expansion only needs a maximum of 37 parking spaces. So there shouldn't be an issue with a parking shortage for this particular use, based on that analysis.
Well, it is an issue for me because they're expanding. They're going to be seeing more patients. So that then becomes, once they do outgrow it or will outgrow it, then it starts affecting their neighbors around them, the other, you know, businesses there. There's no assurance, even with study that we know, that there won't be an issue to come. So it begins to create a precedence if we begin to say, oh, yeah, no worries, the study says you don't need them. And then there's things that happen later, such as the example that Felix gave last time. You know, with Hector's, we originally did not approve that restaurant there, right back up against the neighborhood. But look at the issues that have come from that. And I don't know if studies were made or not, but I just feel like giving up, not being able to meet the requirement moving forwards with a clinic that's expanding could potentially be a problem down the line. So those are my concerns.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Contreras Leo. Okay, a couple of questions I have, and I agree with everybody's comment about the parking. I guess the first question I would ask is, how many of the spaces are dedicated to employees? And how many, and then the balance, obviously, of the 40 is dedicated to patients. Do we have that number?
Chairman, we do, let me look at the study really quick for you.
Are you still there, Jerry?
Yes, Chairman, based on the study, at peak hours, 15 stalls would be utilized by their employees and the remaining will be utilized for its clients.
So 15, 15, so you basically are going to have 25 stalls for patients at this point in time?
Correct.
Because I'm assuming that, you know, it doesn't matter whether it's peak time or off time, as long as the facility is open, you've got 15 employee parking spaces and that's it. How many people are going to be on this site as an employee?
So based on peak hours, I believe they kind of vary depending on the hours determined. I think the highest is at 18 employees per hour. And then you're looking at two to three clients or patients per hour.
Okay, I guess, I guess the question, the question I've got is, you've got 15, let's just, I'm going to go back to the baseline, you've got 15 people that are employed. And the hours of operation on this clinic? You've got fifteen people that are employed and the hours of operation on this clinic?
Twenty-four hours per day.
Correct. It's twenty-four hours.
Correct. And then the applicant can answer some of the operational questions. Because I believe they just adjusted their hours.
Okay, that's fine. Again, just to say that I have a concern because there, you know, if you go by the, just the sheer numbers, forty versus fifty-four, it's a thirty-eight percent decrease in parking fixes. And that is a concern. Uh, is there any, is there any busway or, or mass transit that's in and around this particular area that would offset some of that parking requirement?
Yes, Chairman. And the study did also analyze that there's a bus stop at the intersection of Edinger and Lion Street as well as, um, Edinger and Grand Avenue.
Edinger and Lion, Edinger and Grand Avenue. Okay. All right. I guess, as I would say, the rest of the commissioners have also asked about making sure that the outside has a better appearance to it. I agree with that. Does any of the commissioners have any further comments or questions of staff?
I do, yes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is the college next door, Summit College, still open and operational? Do you know?
Chairman Garcia, I believe they are still open.
Okay, and so parking space is not anticipated to be an issue with students attending that college?
Um, students attending that college are, need to park on the college property. So when we analyze this particular project within the boundaries of the project site, and then in keeping in terms of the context of it, the majority of the other businesses adjacent to it are primarily industrial as well.
Okay, it seems to me that, I just want to echo the concern on parking in that area, especially if you have a college next door and if it's operational, I'm sure there's some, you know, overlap there in terms of use when those spaces are so crowded. So I would ask you to consider that a little bit more closely. Now, you know, I, I'm, um, in terms of improving the look of this space, I think with a, to add on to what Commissioner Ramirez Leo said, I think planters and maybe some pavers at the driveway, some vines along the columns. And I think there's some, I would, you know, ask you to request or ask us to request some kind of green space in between those parking stops and the, uh, the sidewalk if there is any opportunity to do that. And, and maybe I'm misreading, you know, exhibit seven, but it's hard for me to see it. I think it's blurry on my end for some reason, uh, only this particular exhibit. So I, I think there, there is definite room for improvement there and I would want to absolutely see more green space allotted somewhere. If this is going to be a twenty-four hour urgent care, I don't see a lot of lighting either. I think that's going to be important. And I'm not sure that if I missed it on, in the stack report or in any of these drawings and elevations, that there's going to be added lighting incorporated.
Commissioner Garcia, just to explain again, the landscape planter that they're going to be adding, it's a five-foot wide landscape planter that's going to run the entire stretch of the property's frontage along Edinger. We cannot ask for an additional or, or wider landscape planter because then it's going to impact the circulation of the project. Um, in addition to your comment with regards to adding additional landscape fingers or green walls along the buildings, western property, uh, western facade, they could certainly do that, but that's also going to remove some of their existing parking spaces. And the
So, you know, go ahead, sorry.
And then your last comment with regards to lighting, there's currently lighting along the western portion elevation of the building as well as in the frontage of the building.
Uh, again, I think it would be very helpful for me to actually, I can't really picture what, um, the green space would look like with the additions. And I understand what you're saying in terms of, you can't, you know, we're concerned on the one hand about not losing parking space, but then we're pressing for, asking you to, you know, find, find the space to add green and make it look, you know, uh, much nicer than it currently does. And I understand that, you know, it's, it's a hard balance. But I think if we don't request it now and we don't find a way to get it, to do it more, I think, effectively, then it doesn't get done. So I don't know. I mean, I, I think I'm going to want to see a better elevation of what the landscaping is going to look like on this particular project, yeah.
This, this is Lisa Stork. Um, I just want to make sure that you all remember that any conditions that we put on the approval of the discretionary approvals, they need to be related to the impacts that are created by the project. So I know that you mentioned that, you know, a major facelift and, and other things. We just have to also just remember what the discretionary approval is that they're seeking and make sure there's a nexus between the conditions that we impose.
Yeah, no, thank you, Lisa. I'm definitely not suggesting a major facelift. I just, you know, I think some pavers at the sidewalk and some planters and, or, you know, green space would provide, I think, cosmetically what gives us this, a decent facelift. But also on the lighting, I, I'm on Google Maps now. I don't really see how well lit it is. In terms of safety, that's important. So I think I'd like to see exactly how well lit it is at night. That is all for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morrissey, any further comments of staff?
Uh, yes, sir, I do. I have one comment, or maybe two. I am concerned.
You can have a break.
Okay, great. I was looking at the plan a little further and I'm still concerned about the number of parking spaces we're giving up. I think that's been voiced that when I look at the floor plan, they have fifty-four seats shown in the welcome lounge. So I'm really concerned about the planned intensity of the use and the parking that's going to generate. It's, it just doesn't seem consistent with the application. Plan doesn't seem consistent with the application. And, uh, in terms of landscape, if we are going to give up some parking spaces, would it be possible to, on the east side, they have wheel stops, turn that into a curb and create a green space there for perhaps a green wall or something along that side? That might be a possibility. Just a suggestion, but I think just the bigger picture, I'm concerned about the number of parking stalls we're giving up.
Okay. Any other, any other comments, Commissioner Morrissey?
Uh, not at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Nguyen?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera? No, no comment, thank you. Okay. Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Nope. Ms. Garcia again said it well for me as well.
Okay. And I'm good at this point in time. So, um, thank you, Jerry. Madam Secretary, have you received any recommendations on this item?
Yes, we received two letters and those have been distributed. One was in support and one was in opposition.
Okay. And, um, okay, with that said, the public hearing is now open. Would the applicant like to speak on this matter?
Hi, my name is Mike Stewart. I'm a representative for Concentra. And the, the couple of comments that I do have is related to the parking as compared to the patient count. By and large, we are appointments and we deal with work-related injuries. And we, for the most part, keep a pretty steady count on our, our patient load per day. The parking analysis that was generated took into consideration the expansion, not our existing patient count. So we do not anticipate in, in any stretch of the imagination in the foreseeable future having anywhere, or using anywhere near the forty spaces at any given time. I believe that even at our highest patient count, we anticipate using thirty-three of those spaces at our peak times. So, and if we did, if our patient count did increase that dramatically, we, of course, we would be thrilled and we would do one of two things. We would expand in that area, which we have done so in the past in other areas, or we would reach out and we would look for other avenues to bring our patients in, which we've done that as well, and then reach out to the planning commission for a variance to support our request to bring in patients, whether it be busing, alternative parking, whatever, whatever means that we came about to make that happen. As far as the facade, we are leasing three bays out of that entire space. So while we will do what is requested of us for those three bays, we are not in control of the rest and we would have to get landlord permission to do any sort of an improvement to his building. So that needs to be taken into consideration as well. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have any, um, any people that would like to speak on this item?
If you'd like to speak on this matter, please dial star nine now. We do not have anyone that would like to speak on this item.
Mr. Chairman, Vince Fregoso here. If you allow me a moment, I can help you out here with some background as well, whenever you have a chance. Sure, thank you very much. Hi, Jerry was trying to convey the problem we have here with bringing up a building that was built in nineteen sixty-nine after current codes. If you've seen the Google Maps and looked at the site, it is hundred percent building or parking lot with absolutely zero landscaping on it. So in this kind of situation, what we try to do is exactly what the commission was asking for. Where can you provide landscaping to bring it closer to compliance and try to soften the impact of this project without losing parking spaces? Because that's the other critical issue that was brought up here was parking. So what Jerry had explained is we pushed the parking spaces back, provided landscape setback, and what we do is through the landscape plan, we enhance the landscaping, make it bigger, larger sizes to help soften it up. Any other pockets that possible, we'll put it on the slide as well. Again, looking at the site plan, look at the aerial, there really is no place to put landscaping except for along that front setback on Edinger Avenue. So Jerry has conveyed that we're going to push it back and add that five-foot landscaping, put, uh, better and more mature plant materials. Uh, as far as parking, always a concern of ours, always. And that's why, which is why we're always reluctant to go forward with variances in front of the planning commission. And so one of the things that we ask for is we ask for a parking study and we ask them for information on how operators of similar uses are functioning. And based on this study, they've shown us to a comfortable level, to my comfortable level, if I need to approve it, that they will have surplus parking at their worst times because they are more of an industrial clinic, more by appointment only as opposed to just kind of walking in. So the option exists there if we want to. The college next door would be a good one if we want to put a condition on it that has to provide off-site parking spaces or adjacent parking spaces. We can do that. The other issue that was brought up was lighting. Lighting is a code requirement and not a condition. That's why you don't see anything at this level here as far as lighting. So one of the requirements by the police department is to provide lighting on the site for this facility. And as, as the applicant mentioned, it's not her site, it's the owner's site. If the owner refuses to put lighting, the CEP will not become effective. We'll just hold off on issuing that CEP until the lighting gets done or it just goes away. But the lighting is mandatory, landscaping as much as possible, and we can help look for options there to provide some off-site parking if that is a big concern. One of the things the commission has done, backing for other projects, bring it back in six months if you'd like, and we'll come back and bring it back. We'll do another study, take a look at the parking and see how the site operates. Again, the last thing Lisa mentioned was the nexus. We have to be careful what we ask for as far as requirements and conditions. And we couldn't find a nexus between rehabbing the building's frontage and a parking variance. So that's why you didn't see anything on the requirements or conditions as far as doing a building upgrade to the site because we couldn't provide that nexus. So I think that's enough. Uh, thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I can answer them for you.
Okay, thank you, Vince. Madam Secretary, do we have any, any public that would like to comment on this item?
If you'd like to comment, please press star nine now. Chair, there are no callers that wish to speak on this matter.
Okay, hearing none, then we'll close the public hearing and we will bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Garcia, do you have any comments on this item?
I do, just want to thank to both Lisa and Vince for the remarks and providing additional background on this. I still remain, you know, I think adamant that I want to see more green and it, you know, maybe it's just a visual issue for me. But it's really, I think one of the things really important personally is that when we see a building that could be improved, even if it's just, you know, with small things, that we take every opportunity to do that. Commissioner Ramirez Leo said it perfectly when she said our city and our residents deserve better. I pulled up, you know, very briefly to see, you know, where Concentra is in other parts of Orange County, then they're, they're a very big institution. And, you know, wherever they're leasing in those other neighboring cities, they're, things look a lot nicer. So I think if there's an opportunity for us to, to do more and request more, we should. And I think that's really where, where I'm coming from on this.
Okay, Commissioner Morrissey?
Uh, yes, um, thank you. I think, uh, Mr. Fregoso brought up a point. I was thinking, is there, is there an opportunity anywhere for some sort of reciprocal parking agreement for employees? Uh, that can help offset the shortage perhaps? Or may, maybe we think about having applicants come, come back, work something out and come back. I don't know if that opportunity exists though. I'm just concerned about the, the number of parking spaces and how we resolve that.
I think, I think that what Vince brought out in his statement is a possibility of what we can, we can pursue if we're, if we're comfortable to move forward. Then I think what we would request is a updated study. If I understand what Vince was saying, an updated study in six months or in a year or whatever we feel would be a good timeframe indicative of the, you know, of the facility's use and everything else. So if, if that satisfies your concern, then we could probably do just that.
Yeah, um, that, I think that would, that would help a lot. The, the other item is, I would like to ask staff, is it possible to add a curb on the east side and get some green in there? They have the wheel stops that are, is, there's no dimension, probably thirty inches or three feet or so away from the building, put a curb there instead. Put a curb there instead.
Commissioner Morrissey, are you referring to the parking stalls along the western elevation?
I'm sorry, west. Yes.
Commissioner Vince Fregoso, I don't think that's going to happen. I'm familiar with the site to the west and that is a shared driveway right there, has easements on it. We would have to have the object modify some significant easements to allow that to happen. So and I believe that that's also their backup space. So it's very, very unlikely. I'd say it's not feasible to do.
Okay.
But we can look at putting a green wall right on that wall, on that area, that east wall. We can look into that.
Pocket, vine pocket, get a green wall.
From vine pocket, exactly. Put some trellises in a vine pocket and every fifteen feet on center and then have a vine sprout. We can, we can easily look into that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, Commissioner Morrissey?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Nguyen.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera.
No, no question.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo. Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
It would help if I unmuted myself.
There you go.
Would there be an issue with bringing this item back for our next meeting? Just so that there can be some brainstorming and maybe we can get some visuals on what could actually, you know, be created in terms of beautifying the site. I think that in terms of moving forward, especially with our work study that we're going to have in relation to the general plan, this would fit in with environment and quality of life. And we do have the opportunity to do, even if it's the smallest stuff, it makes a difference. So I don't know if it's too much to ask to go back and, and just kind of work with the tenant and see. I mean, we might be surprised. Is it a...
Are you saying, are you saying working with the tenant or working with the landlord?
Well, it might have to be both. I, I don't know because the applicant saying that the landlord might not want certain things. So I don't know if it's a dual type of brainstorming that needs to happen. Obviously, we're not asking for major stuff since it doesn't lend itself to that. But I think there are some things that could probably be considered, but not until everyone's together will those ideas probably come about. Is this such an outlandish ask, ask to be able to come back with some of this?
You can make that motion or that, or that point if you wanted to do that.
I was asking staff. I wanted to see if staff.
Okay, Vice Chair, that's totally at your discretion. We can work with you whenever, whenever schedule we need to accommodate. Maybe we should ask the applicant or the timeline and see how it impacts them and their scheduling.
Yeah, I'd like to know if that would affect them for the next meeting.
This is, this is Mikey Stewart again and I would greatly appreciate the opportunity to move forward with the permitting process and not delay it any further. We are willing to work with the commission and we are willing to accept discretion. But we would, again, greatly appreciate not postponing any potential approval.
Okay.
We, this process has been, I think, close to a year now, eight, nine months at the very least. So we feel like that we have put in the time as requested by the, you know, by your commission in order to seek this approval so that we can complete our tenant improvements.
I can appreciate that, but it's also our responsibility to look out for the quality of, you know, projects that come in for our residents. So that's why I was asking just for a few more weeks. But I understand where you're coming from.
We have currently occupied sixteen nineteen and sixteen twenty-three for several years now with no negative feedback that I'm aware of. All that we're simply asking is to expand into the space that we've been leasing now for over a couple of years. And that, that expanded space does not even come anywhere near the, the parking spaces that are available. Even at our peak time and forecasting of more patients, we don't come near that. So I'm, I guess, I can appreciate what you're asking for and, and again, we do want to help the community and we want to, we want to enhance the community. It's just, there's, we feel like there's only so much that we could do being in that particular lease space in that market.
Okay.
Okay, any other, any other comments, Vice Chair?
No, thank you.
Okay, I guess, I have, just out of curiosity, looking at the, the layout of the office internal, is there any, is this what would be considered to be COVID? Basically, I mean, the, the different, the different waiting rooms and the different areas that are for, for patient examinations and things like that, are they pretty much to what would be considered today's standard, which is COVID? Or is this something that's consistent with what's been done in the past?
So I can tell you that the space was not designed for COVID. Of course, COVID was not around to our knowledge at that time. But moving forward, since COVID has then changed our patient, our acceptance of patients to fifty percent or less and that's based accordingly. So we, we definitely have, have changed our operations to accommodate the COVID virus and our programs accordingly.
Okay, that, and that's sort of what I was figuring you would say because it's, it's process internal to the existing facility. Understand? Okay, I don't have any further questions from my standpoint. Would anybody like to make a motion on this item? And if there's a question of conditioning, we can also do that too. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the applicant explore reciprocal parking agreements or ways to mitigate parking and come back in thirty days. Work with staff to...
So are you, are you, are you making a motion to continue this for thirty days?
Continue it for thirty days.
And I'd add a friendly amendment is, is Commissioner Morrissey accepts that, that in the meantime, we explore further other ways to beautify the space, including the green wall along the east wall.
Okay.
And planters at the entrance of the, columns at the entrance of the building.
So, okay, so with your friendly amendment, are you also seconding the, the proposal by Commissioner Morrissey?
I am, sure.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Chair.
This is Minty. I may make a suggestion. From what we heard, there are a number of issues that we can work with the applicant if it's in the power of the commission to move forward this motion. I would ask if you would allow it so that, you know, the flexibility of coming back in two weeks. Because we could very well work through many of the issues with the applicant in two weeks and if we need additional time, we can continue additional time at that time, understanding the applicant's timeframe. Just allow the flexibility that it could, it could come back in two weeks if needed.
Yeah, that is... Okay, so, are you okay with two weeks?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. They want to come back. They worked something out in two weeks. That's great.
Okay. All right, so we have, we have a motion and we have a second with a friendly amendment. All right, any other dispositions on this item at this point in time? Okay, hearing none. Madam Secretary, could you restate the motion and friendly amendment?
Sure. So there is a motion by Commissioner Morrissey to continue the item for two weeks to allow the tenant additional time to explore reciprocal parking agreement. And that motion was, I'm sorry, Commissioner Garcia made a friendly amendment to that motion to also include the possibility to improve the landscape plan.
Okay. And with that said, would you please take a roll call vote?
Yes, Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Morrissey.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero with Commissioner Fan absent.
Okay, thank you to the applicant. We will move on?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Unfortunately, I need to excuse myself. My daughter's here and she's flying out tomorrow and we need to get her packed up for college. So they're all waiting on me. So I'm gonna have to say goodnight at this point.
Okay, well, we appreciate you making it through the meeting so far and thank you very much and have fun with your daughters last night. And she won't get any more home cook?
Nope, no more. She's on her own. But thank you and goodnight, everybody.
All right.
Goodnight.
Well, then let's, what we do at this point in time is we'll move on to the work study. And Bernie, are you going to be presenting to us at this point in time?
Yes, yes, I am. Good evening, Chair McLaughlin. Commissioners, this is Bernie Carver Hall speaking. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. All right, I'm here this evening to provide you with a brief overview on where we're at today in regards to the general plan. Since this process began back in twenty fifteen, we wanted to drill down a bit on a few key topics and discuss our land use element and focus areas. Next slide, please. As outlined in the presentation, the goal for the meeting today is to provide an overview of the purpose and of the elements of the general plan, discuss the overall organization of the document, provide highlights of draft policies, an overview of the land use focus areas, and lastly, to discuss the draft EIR and next steps. Next slide, please. As you may be aware, the general plan is one of the most important policy documents towards achieving our vision for the future. In this case, the new general plan provides a long-range tool that sets forth goals, policies, and programs to help guide implementation of our vision. As you see on this slide here, I've highlighted the twelve new elements as well as, in yellow, there are highlighted the elements which may be of special importance to this planning commission. As required by the state, there are seven required elements, which you'll see on the left there. And as of twenty eighteen, the topic of environmental justice is required by the state for all general planning elements and updates moving forward. This new plan is based on the five core values, which will hold each goal and policy accountable to these community pillars of culture, sustainability, health, education, and equity. Next slide, please. This slide provides a nice timeline of where we're at today following a multi-year community outreach program, an extensive one, that has involved key stakeholders, residents, the business community, and has reached out to our seniors, our youth, and our future. Ongoing feedback has been provided through our city council along each step in the process. Specifically, we've had sixty-plus meetings and events reaching out to the public, the planning commission, city council, and various community stakeholders from twenty fifteen until today. As you see in the timeline, as part of the general plan advisory group in twenty seventeen, there were fourteen meetings, many of those in the evening and multiple, multiple hours each night to distill the information of the community and together craft these goals, values, and policies which were then delivered to our city council in twenty eighteen. Additional meetings are scheduled throughout the process this year as we intend to adopt the plan at the end of the year. Next slide, please. Tonight, we wanted to kind of give you a preview of one of the elements as part of the twelve in the general plan, which may be of special interest to this commission, the land use element. On the left portion of the slide, you'll see a table of content which would include the style of organization for our new general plan, which would include sections that specifically speak to community considerations. So each element will begin with considerations brought forth by the community and then a policy framework, subsequent implementation actions that we'll cover in future slides here, associated figures and tables, and then any related items pertaining to the element. Next slide, please. This, this slide talks about our key assets, addressing our priorities and building upon them. This new general plan hopes to be a highly visual document that is streamlined, easy to use. And these twelve elements will be all visually appealing as this kind of spread shows you just a sampling of what the land use element would look like when you start to turn the page, replacing the outdated elements that were last done comprehensively in nineteen eighty-two. Next slide, please. On the left, you see a set of clear and concise goals and policies that were derived from the hard work of the general plan advisory group and the community. And through direction by city council, each of the elements will contain goals and policies and then cross-reference with our five core values as you see, which are color-coded to, to ensure relevance and consistency with what we said from the get-go. Next slide, please. This next slide talks about implementation. An implementation plan for each element will put existing goals and policies into action. Specifically, each goal and policy will have an associated list of actions listing responsible agency and timeframe necessary for completion. Next slide, please. The early outreach efforts that I previously discussed resulted in some key takeaways for the formation of this plan. This is an excerpt of one of our community flyers in where the community was clear in that our plan should protect and enhance our cultural and historic assets, create land use patterns that promote healthy and active lifestyles, how do we ensure equitable distribution of our resources, how to remain a sustainable city, and how do we continue to promote lifelong education and economic prosperity. These takeaways have become these key topics in our new general plan and we intend to create an emphasis in the areas of health and wellness, environmental justice... justice, climate adaptation, for the first time ever in a new historic preservation element, community empowerment, and other areas of concern to the community. These topics will contain applicable policies and actions to address each of these topics. Next slide, please. Wanted to provide you with a quick example of one of the key topics of environmental justice that emerged through S B one thousand, um, which requires cities like ours to update our policies for disadvantaged communities to reduce compounded health risks, promote civil engagement, and prioritize improvements in key areas of our city. As of today, we have about seventeen, uh, census tracts in our city, which, um, comprised of a large portion of our city that are considered disadvantaged for S B one thousand. And in response to that, staff produced an informational flyer on environmental justice specifically, and provided an online e-learning tool to describe these considerations and ongoing work, um, in the area of environmental justice. This is one approach that we took, given the current challenges that we had with COVID. And then in addition, um, in order to create a streamlined policy document that folks can kind of easily reference, we placed that available for review in the last month. Comments and responses have been received throughout the process and will continue to be shared at this study session, as well as subsequent study sessions, uh, with this commission and the city council. In, in, in total, about fifty-four thousand flyers were mailed out to our E J communities and then our individual focus areas that we'll discuss in, in, in the coming slides here. Next slide, please. So this portion of the presentation is intended to provide a little snapshot of some of the key land use focus areas that we've been, um, studying throughout the process. These land use focus areas were a result of, again, community outreach and a survey that was produced, one-on-one city council meetings, um, to further look at the, the survey results, and then general core values and regional goals and how those were applied on the plan itself. Next slide, please. This slide covers, um, two things. First off, on the bottom of the slide, we see in blue our existing plan adopted areas. Many of you are familiar with Harbor Boulevard. Uh, in the center of our screen there, we have, um, our South Bristol Street, our corridor specific plan. We have, um, our downtown, um, midtown plan, and then our recently adopted Metro East Plan on the east part of the city. And then lastly, um, recently, we did adopt, uh, Main Place Specific Plan on the north side of the, of the slide that you'll see in blue. Additional focus areas, as you see highlighted in pink, and we'll go through each of them briefly this, this evening as time allows. Um, the first is South Main Street. Second is Brandon Seventeenth Street to the twenty-two freeway on the, on the north and on southbound to First Street by the D M V. The West Santa Ana Boulevard focus area will take our downtown and create a connection between our downtown and the Harbor Plan. The fifty-five freeway and dire road focus area will serve to capitalize on the, uh, adjacency to the S R fifty-five freeway and our key gateway entrance to the city, as well as additional opportunities for mixed-use development in that, in that sector. And then lastly, um, to our south, a, a clear connection between our, uh, much of the wonderful work that happened as part of the South Bristol Plan and the southerly boundary of our city at, uh, at Sunflower, where there's a, where there's a clear disconnect between our city and what's going on, um, with all the successes happening at, at South Coast Plaza and the South Coast Village area. So those are the five, um, focus areas that we're hoping to cover this evening. Next slide, please. Wanted to provide you with some visuals. This first slide discusses the South Main Street focus area. Some of our objectives for this area are to facilitate redevelopment of property along South Main Street, create active and dynamic streetscapes along, um, South Main Street. As you know, many of the buildings are at the street, um, at the street. How can we introduce additional uses on, on, on prime vacant piece of properties as well as opportunities for infill development here in support of transit, pedestrian and non-motorized travel? The next slide allows us to, to dig a little deeper and take a look at the focus area, um, on the land use plan. So this slide covers the four land use designations that currently exist on the South Main Street, um, focus area, the first being low-density residential. One of the things I wanted to clarify is that this low-density residential remains unchanged for the most part. The area is shown just to illustrate, you know, what happens to the east and west of this, um, part of town. This is where some of our densest neighborhoods exist. We felt that the second land use category of urban neighborhood was, uh, appropriate here where we can continue to look at low-density urban neighborhoods with a mix of single-family and multifamily housing, some mixed-use residential uses. Here is an opportunity for some missing middle housing. Um, many of our residents, um, you know, also expressed how, you know, we have lots of high-density residential, um, lots of single-family residential, but there is clearly a, a need for, you know, lower-scale, um, uh, lower-scale residential, uh, missing middle housing, you know, courtyard housing, duplexes, triplexes, things like that. Lastly, industrial flex serves to speak to some of the topics of environmental justice and take existing light industrial and heavy industrial areas and transform those into, uh, cleaner R and D manufacturing and flex spaces for our many makers, um, in the city. And then some cleanup items here, the lap colors institutional, where we talk about government facilities and making our land use plan consistent with some of those uses in the ground today. The next slide, um, provides some visual, um, cues of what the area currently looks like. This is taken from the southeast corner of Broadway and Warner Avenue. There's a low-scale light industrial building, and then you see another one in the background there. Just on the left slide and out of, um, out of picture would be a, uh, shopping center. I believe there's a, a McDonald's on that intersection as well. The next slide shows us what the potential for one of those classifications, which was industrial flex, and what that could yield. Keep in mind that these are illustrative, um, these do not denote any current developer projects that are being proposed today or, uh, before you for action. It just kind of shows, um, the potential for some clean mixed-use products on this particular property and then in this focus area. Moving on to our next focus area on the next slide, please. The Grand and, the Grand Avenue and Seventeenth Street focus area initially began at, at the node at Grand and Seventeenth, where the intent was to create additional mixed-use corridors, um, realize a more intense multi-story partition along these underutilized corridors. We have the former, uh, Food for Less and some of the single-story seventies retail uses along this corridor. And how do we foster community spaces in additional neighborhoods serving amenities for the local residents while developing opportunities for live-work, artist spaces, but at the same time maintaining, um, compatible nodes, uh, of commercial activity and being respectful to some of those low-scale residential uses, um, um, to the north, east and west? The next slide shows the boundaries, the expanded boundaries of the, of the Grand Avenue and Seventeenth Street focus area, which now, um, is taken northbound to the twenty-two freeway and either, on either side of, um, of Brand Avenue there, and then south as far as First Street to intersect with the Metro East Plan and then, um, to serve as a connector between our north, north-south, um, north-south development and then what's happening toward downtown. The next slide shows, in this instance, an example of a transition between a single-family product. I believe this is Grove Mont or one of the east-west streets, um, just north of Seventeenth and, and Brand Avenue. And on the next slide, you see, um, the introduction of urban neighborhood in the background, a two or three-story element that's, um, tiered back from the residential and introduces some, uh, potential in that area. We're looking for some reactions here this evening, but feel free to, you know, jump in or wait until I, you know, finish these focus areas and I'd be happy to, you know, take some questions and answers and maybe some of your gut reactions to some of these, um, illustrations.
Can I make a quick comment?
Absolutely.
Um, yes.
Yes, Commissioner.
I went to one of the, uh, meeting meetings on this and it was, the, uh, the notion of additional landscape, um, buffer between these transition zones from, uh, single-family to multifamily was important. I, I don't think this image really shows that. I, I, I think the scale's nice, I just think it, it needs a little more, um, I think we need to be sensitive, sensitive to that, um, desire that was expressed.
Great, great, thank you for that comment. Many of these, um, slides are, are, as I mentioned, conceptual. We did take a lot of that right back from our, um, community meetings and we hope to introduce additional standards through, um, your, through our zoning, um, document, as well as looking at ways to expand our, our open space element, which we will cover, um, you know, in future study sessions. Thank you. Sure thing. Perhaps I can continue here on the next land use focus area for West Santa Ana Boulevard. This focus area, um, as I mentioned, includes the trajectory of the future Orange County streetcar, which is in full motion these days and under construction. How can we introduce additional multi-story housing and mixed-use opportunities near these prime streetcar locations while, um, continuing to respect established neighborhoods and buffering our future residents as well as our existing residents from noxious industrial uses and allow for opportunities for cleaner industrial maker-type spaces? So some of the imagery starts to speak to some of those, um, ideas. The next slide talks about some of, and walks us through some of the land uses that are proposed here. Again, there are some existing uses that are going to remain unchanged. For example, um, under open space there in green, you see Willow Wick is intending to remain open space at this, at this juncture as recreation and green space, institutional, um, in the light blue. We discussed at a, in the previous focus area, the opportunity that industrial flex brings to the table, uh, by doing two things, um, cleaning up, um, industrial and heavy industrial uses and introducing, um, opportunities for R and D and maker types of spaces. Um, professional office uses, um, in small amounts there, um, you'll see on the next slide. And then, uh, the red is our general commercial which exists today. This one was broken up into two slides. If you can get the next slide, where we start talking about our residential land use designators. Again, the, the low-density residential that you see would remain unchanged in most areas. There is a, a new designator of, um, medium-density residential for low and medium-rise, single and multifamily housing, which were, um, which were a great opportunity, um, here, as well as introduction of urban neighborhood for, um, you know, for variety here, single and multifamily housing, mixed-use cultural uses in public and private open space. The next slide, um, shows, I think, a vantage point of Townsend Street, looking northbound. I believe this is Third and Townsend. In the background, it's tough to see, but would be the east-west connector to one of the streetcar stops. Wanted to provide a, a nice perspective of an existing single-family residence and then the potential on the next slide, um, as it faces existing industrial use. On the next slide, we can see the introduction of, um, one or two-story clean flex industrial, maintaining single-family dwellings, and then introducing some opportunity for mixed-use in the background there. Moving on to the next slide, um, as we discuss the fifty-five freeway dire road opportunity for enhancing large multi-story office industrial uses, all additional, additional housing opportunities, attracting, um, additional economic, um, energy from some of the surrounding communities, and looking at key gateway destinations to, to attract similar uses that, you know, even like the cities of Fountain Valley, Irvine and others are experiencing along the, on the, on the edge of the arterials there, on, on the freeway arterials, while maintaining, um, our hotel and commercial uses for this designation. The next slide shows in detail some of the land use, um, designations. First off, general commercial, um, would remain unchanged here for our, our hotel terrace area and looking at the opportunities that that might bring in with, with some changes on the east side of the freeway and, and preserving some, um, some, uh, shopping, restaurant, entertainment uses, while introducing urban neighborhood at the city's edge along dire road. Um, and this, this area is, was previously, um, approved with uses such as the Heritage and then most recently like the Bowery are in this, in this focus area. So more, more mixed-use opportunities, um, to capitalize on, uh, on what's happening and some of the energy on the east side there. And then industrial flex, as we mentioned, at a bit higher scale here for R and D, clean manufacturing and, and capital uses, biotech, research and development here. And, um, this illustration, if we get the next slide, shows the background of what is relatively lower scale on the east side of the fifty-five. We have, um, one and two-story hotels and some single and two-story industrial uses. And then on the west, uh, on the, on the west side of the freeway, we have, you know, some self-stor-, some self-storage facilities and some, um, you know, paper facilities and some other uses that definitely could, um, be upgraded in this, uh, focus area. The next slide provides an illustration of what that R and D industrial flex could be up to ten stories in height, with some additional development in mixed-use, such as what we saw at the Heritage on the right of the slide.
Hey, before you move forward, can you, okay, two, two slides before that?
That looks great.
So, on, on this slide, could you explain, um, urban neighborhood and district center? Is that, is that a mistype?
Alright, so, um, sure thing. I, was that mint asking the question?
Yeah.
Okay, so, district center in this area would be in the, in the dark purple. As you see, the intent is to allow up to six stories in height for district center. Uh, and the range typically would be two-point-oh F A R for ninety Ds per acre here. Industrial flex, which would be the light blue, would be up to three-point-oh corridor ratio and up to ten stories in height, adjacent to the fifty-five freeway there, to capitalize on some of the gateway uses and the potential there.
And is the urban neighborhood on the deep purple, is that a mistype?
Should be up to six stories, um, is what the plan shows.
I'm sorry, the urban neighborhood designation?
Yes, yes, you're correct. So the, the, the label of district center should be urban neighborhood. I apologize for that. Or the other way around, I'm sorry, the urban neighborhood should be district center on, on the slide. So should we go general, commercial, district center, industrial flex on the left? Thank you. Make sure to make that revision. Good catch, thank you, man. Good catch, thank you, man. All right, with that, we'll, uh, proceed to our next focus area for South Bristol Street. As I mentioned, uh, the intent for this focus area was to capitalize on the success of the South Coast Metro area and introduce additional mixed-use urban villages, um, realize a higher-intent multi-story presence along the corridor, specifically as we approach Costa Mesa to the south, and look for mixed-use opportunities while being respectful of our low-density residential neighborhoods as we, um, as we go northbound on the corridor itself. The next slide speaks to the land use, um, plan here. As you, as you see, there are two designations. The first is district center in the dark purple, and that district center would be broken up in terms of allowable height and density. As we are, as we go further south, as I mentioned, on Sunflower Avenue, we would have height up to twenty-five stories to complement what's happening on the sou- southerly part of the city. And then as we approach MacArthur Boulevard, between MacArthur and Alton, we'd have a lower scale, up to ten stories in height. And then northbound, between Warner Avenue and Alton Avenue, we'd have, um, three stories in height for urban neighborhood, which would be our second land use designation. Uh, allow for medium-density urban neighborhoods adjacent to our existing single-family dwellings there.
I, I have a question?
Sure thing.
What's the, uh, green line that runs through the diagonal across MacArthur?
So, thank you, thank you for your question. The, the green line that runs through should be the, the P right away. I believe there's a, a right away that runs through there, um, is what it illustrates. There should be a channel as well. There's a, there's a green channel that kind of meanders, um, almost like in an S-shaped curve through MacArthur Boulevard. And then there's another one that intersects Bristol Street at Alton, which is the Pacific Electric right away. All right, thank you. You're welcome. So the next slide, if we could advance, um, takes a vantage point of Kalin's Common and Bristol Street, looking southwest there, there's a Buffalo Wild Wings and a single-story mid-century retail center with Costa Mesa at the background there. Next slide starts to introduce some pretty intensive uses on the DC district center side to illustrate what that DC would yield. One of the things I wanted to show is that in this area at the southeast corner, we have a DC designation today. The goal would be to carry over what exists, um, onto the west side of Bristol Street, um, through the South Coast Village area to allow for additional densities in this, in this, um, sector. All right, with that, um, I'm not sure, um, Min, uh, Vince, if you'd like to break for a few questions at this point before we go over some additional topics?
Sure, Bernie, it's a good idea. Mr. Chairman, uh, any, any questions other commission?
Hey, um, let's go by, by Commissioner, Commissioner Garcia. Any questions?
Ah, I do, let me just, I'm writing them down, Tony. Uh, just a, a quick, uh, request maybe for, uh, for you to show this a little later. In the slide where you have the, the new, uh, designations, I think they're like at forty, like forty, like forty-eight, could we see an overlay of what is changing? Uh, it's why with an overlay so we can really compare it and understand, you know, what, how some of those are changing? And then, you know, you showed us a really pretty picture, it's slide forty-two on the industrial flex, and, um, I have to ask, can we see what, you know, what the ugly picture looks like? What's the, uh, what it, what it could actually, uh, is there a nightmare, I think, you know, potential for, for that? I would, I think those are my, um, major, uh, well, both of the two requests in terms of visuals, but I think I asked you guys this before, but, you know, I see a lot of these, you know, it seems like we're really pushing towards high-rises and more, um, dense housing. And my question, um, is, is this really, what we're predominantly hearing from the community over the last five years, is this is a trend that we want and are moving towards of the city?
Right, does that conclude your questions or your comments there? Commissioner Garcia?
Yes, I, I missed that, what was that?
I'm not sure if you had concluded your, your comment there and so I could respond.
Yes, I'm, I'm done.
All right, great. So we'd absolutely be, um, able to show you the land use plan as it exists and it would is proposed. We, we definitely have those plans available, um, so we'd be happy to furnish those. On your second comment related to slide forty-one and forty-two, I know we're moving quickly here, but slide forty-one shows existing conditions, followed by slide forty-two, which shows a potential rendering of a project that could, um, could be placed on that site.
Right, and so I think forty-two, I mean, it's, it's a beautiful visual and I think it'd be great. Uh, so your, your answer then telling me that forty-one is like the ugly, you know, that, that is worst case scenario, safe as it is, and we have, you know, no, that's it, is that, um, is that what I'm hearing? Which is a fair, uh, response.
It's, it's tough to respond to that. I know what we're looking at today is trying to clean up the industrial uses. This photograph appears to show kind of like an industrial office or retail type of use. Um, you know, it doesn't necessarily demonstrate, um, a heavy industrial or a heavy industrial user. So our, our goal with this is to show a mixture of uses that could kind of, um, work kind of symbiotically together. And, um, you know, in addition to industrial, we would introduce things like commercial, mixed-use, um, maker-type of spaces in this area. So it just kind of shows an example. It, it, it doesn't necessarily say that the, the prior slide is any, any worse or better, it just kind of shows the potential.
That's, that was a very fair response, uh, thank you, Bernie.
Sure. Commissioner Garcia, any other questions?
Yeah, and the, the last question I had, which is really, you know, I see everything sort of, we're, we're moving up in the city, we're building up in the city. And so the question is, is that, is that, you know, the overwhelming feedback that, uh, you received over the last five years, is this the direction that we want to go in this city overwhelmingly?
I, I appreciate the, the comment, Commissioner, thank you. We have had various iterations of this land use plan, and we have taken them back to the community for comment. There were instances where the community had commentary, specifically where there was an interface between the single-family product and, um, like an arterial street, for example. Um, other areas, um, you know, like South Bristol Street, you know, some of the comments that we got in those areas were to increase the heights and increase the densities. So we've been trying to be mindful of some of those comments by bringing, uh, heights and densities down in those key areas where we receive that feedback. And, you know, in areas where the community saw potential, we try to be responsive as well.
A follow-up question to that is, is, um, if we're building towards, I think, maybe it's a balance or maybe it's an overwhelming, you know, what I'm seeing, and maybe it's a very unfair, you know, statement, but if we're moving towards more dense housing, as we look to our future and, and, you know, developing these areas, are we more of a transitional city, city, uh, where we're catering to young, young people, young professionals, unexiled families? Or, uh, is that part of the conversation at all?
Well, that, that's also another great question. We have, um, uh, it's a very difficult ta- task to move forward with a general plan that encompasses the needs of the entire community. What we're trying to do with this plan is introduce additional housing, commercial, retail, flex uses that are industrial, that are clean, um, in various portions of the city to accommodate as mu- as much of the city and as many of the residents as possible. I, I, I think the, the sense is that there is a variety of housing types and options presented as part of this plan. And another goal that we had was to try to make sure that we weren't displacing or changing land uses for the, for the majority of our cities that are intact and residential neighborhoods, but instead turning our attention at the, the potential for transit-oriented development along these key corridors where, you know, even before COVID, there was a pretty strong transition, um, away from, you know, traditional storefronts. So, you know, with COVID now, uh, you know, it's a whole different environment, you know, folks are even talking about, you know, density and, you know, living close together. So we're adapting as we move forward with this plan and, you know, we're anxious to kind of hear your feedback. You guys, um, are the land use, uh, decision-makers, if you were the policymakers. So we, we were, we were excited to kind of share this plan with you tonight to see what your, uh, initial feedback was and, you know, provide us with additional direction.
Thank you, Bernie. One last thing, and I don't know if it's appropriate to bring up now or even, you know, to consider, but, um, as I see sort of, you know, I don't know, I, I see it, you know, growing upwards, is it appropriate to include, you know, the need or the request for rooftop green space, uh, in, in these, uh, I don't know, dense populations, uh, the, the new developments, or is that something that would be handled, that's what we're discussing?
Absolutely, um, so there is always room in the general plan because the, the plan itself is intended to create, um, very broad, broad-brust strategies and goals, policies that will then help us to implement very specific development standards to achieve those, um, requirements, such as having rooftop green space. So it's definitely something that we should look at for implementation. Um, I think right now, being a built, uh, a built-out city, for the most part, we have to be very strategic in, um, in our open space, uh, in our pursuit of additional open space, if you will. It's tough for the city to take a piece of property on, uh, at this level, for example, and, and designate it green on the map, um, and, and say that we're going to be changing somebody's land use to make it a, a future open space, for example, but for future development opportunities, we need to be very careful in the quantity and amount and location of open space that's required of developers. You're absolutely right.
Well, if that is something to consider now, then I would, um, strongly encourage us to, to really, you know, impress upon the plan that if we're building up and if, as I said, we're built out, the, using the rooftops or, um, these kinds of, you know, green spaces would be great. I know that Mexico City, as they develop, um, the newer part of the city, which is, you know, completely built up and, obviously, it's a huge problem, the use of rooftop, uh, green spaces everywhere and it's, you know, that's what we're going to do, and I would highly encourage us to, to go in that direction.
Thank you, thank you for your comment.
That is all for me, uh, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Bernie.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Morrissey?
Uh, yeah, just a quick comment, it's, uh, I think it's already been mentioned, there's kind of a great need for outdoor space, green space. So I'm really looking forward to see how we incentivize that, there's a lot of ways we can do it. I see a huge untapped potential in, um, whether it's, uh, civic electric, uh, easements or, uh, utility easements or drainage channels or bike paths or, you know, whatever it might be, just a way to increase the amount of green space that, uh, the community needs. So, um, I think the plans would be great and I'm looking forward to see the rest of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Nguyen?
Uh, no comments, thank you. I have, uh, a pleasure to, uh, working with staff over a year, work on this, uh, designed general plan update. So I'm very, somewhat familiar with the, uh, everything, uh, proposed changes on this particular plan. Uh, I would like to take this opportunity to, to thank, uh, every single staff member and other committee member who has spent time over, over a year that worked on this particular plan. That's, that'd be all.
Commissioner Vera?
Um, yes, uh, echoing, uh, some of the stuff, uh, Commissioner Garcia was mentioning, I mean, I can agree, the, you know, um, capitalizing on open space and rooftops, um, it is, I think, key, uh, we're constantly, we're constantly getting projects, um, and I think a lot of times some of the question is, you know, open space, green space, that, uh, access to the public. And having that rooftop access would be, um, would be, it would really be a way for, for the community to engage these, uh, with these buildings or with these, uh, with the residential or, or whatever it may be, commercial business or whatever it may be, um, really engage with, with these, uh, developments. Um, and also, um, it was also mentioned, also the commercial, uh, on the floor, uh, we see, I'm, I'm looking at like, um, lots of fifty-five and dire, um, u- utilizing that commercial, uh, space on the bottom, it creates not just like an industrial area but an area where people are, are at, um, and also, you know, we see, we see less transients and we have a lot more traffic with, you know, foot traffic with people. Um, Edinger and Main is another, uh, Edinger and Main is another, um, uh, I see, you know, that, there's that school, yeah, it's right across the street, constantly, constantly having transients, but if we engage that, that lower level more and we have more, more foot traffic, the commercial space, um, we, we might see that, that population, that we're usually looking for those industrial areas where, where there's not a size or there's just, um, so I think engaging that, that, that bottom level, the commercial space, and, and you're trying to get some type of, um, where, where whatever development it is, you know, has that, the, the community can engage with that, be, be, uh, you know, rooftop access or, or the commercial space or both, um, I think that would be great. Seeing some of these pictures, I mean, it's exciting to see, uh, that we could move in that direction and have that, that same idea, so I'm just excited to see it, um, and looking forward to it. I mean, I appreciate the work and I think it's coming out well.
Okay, anything else? No, nothing else. Okay, um, I, I guess I'll, I'll throw in a couple of questions here. Um, you know, I think Commissioner Garcia was kind of, um, angling in this side, and that is, is that, you know, if, if you look at the single-family homes that we have now in Santa Ana, and you look at the multi-use, um, high-density, uh, housing that we've also started to do, but more importantly, looking at the, the proposals that are sitting here on the table with regards to the, the, uh, plan, and like, I'm looking at one right now where you've got ten-story buildings down in Bristol, down in the Bristol corridor. I, I guess the first question is, with all of this building, um, do we have any idea of what is going to be the impact to the single-family homes in Santa Ana? Uh, is that number going to go up or down? And then, um, you know, looking at the increase in all of these high-density facilities, what do we believe is going to be the increase in population that's going to be accommodated for this? And, and, you know, I've heard, I've heard Bernie talk a, a number of times about maker spaces. Maker spaces are kind of an interesting concept, but they usually are tied to, uh, a number of them are tied to specific industrial areas and a number of them are also tied to schools like UCI and things of that nature, things that we don't necessarily have, uh, available to us. But, you know, I'm just, just curious as to how we believe, what, what are we going to do to attract that? But, you know, I'm just curious as to how we believe, what are we going to do to attract that level of entrepreneurship with regards to maker spaces? How do we expect to handle that?
All right. Well, Chairman McLaughlin, thank you for your comments. I think there's going to be subsequent study sessions with the planning permission to discuss specifics related to impacts as part of the environmental documentation for the project. You know, in terms of traffic and population, I know both of those items were addressed in the EIR itself. There, just kind of just to throw out some numbers, you know, 431,000 folks would be our, you know, built-out population, you know, through this general plan.
How much, how much, Bernie?
We'd get up to about 430,000 folks, just to throw a number out there for you.
Where are we today?
So, we're just, we're just under 400,000.
So, we're looking at
380 or something.
Forty, forty to fifty thousand more people in the area?
Correct. And then about an additional, with built-out and our existing plan areas, about 115,000 additional housing units over 2045.
Okay.
And that includes everything that's been previously approved. The growth areas, which would be just the focus areas and what we're, you know, looking at would net about 35,000 additional housing units, just as a measure for you. But to speak to your comment about the housing, about the maker spaces in our live-work opportunities in our industrial zones, we really wanted to focus in on the OC Streetcar focus area there at Santa Ana Boulevard and looking at ways to take either through implementation actions or through actual zoning that would allow creative uses. You know, things that are like, I don't know, you know, small workshops and things like that in those areas as well as, you know, South Main Street. How do we, how do we gather those folks and how do we accommodate them? I think there's going to have to be future discussions. We had some great feedback from some of our cultural and arts communities that came out to our workshops. And so, we're hoping to engage with them and talk about some arts and culture opportunities there as well. So, you know, we're hopeful that, you know, we've chosen wisely on the industrial flex in those two, in those two areas to allow for those types of uses.
Okay. Let me just, for the sake of, we have, is there anybody, Madam Secretary, is there anybody that is potentially in the audience at this point in time that would like to speak on or ask questions of the presentation?
At this time, there are two individuals that would like to speak.
Okay, so let's bring those two up.
Okay. Caller with the last three numbers of 591, please dial star six to unmute yourself and then state your name and your comment. Please go ahead.
Hi. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brett Cordy. I'm an attorney with UC Irvine Environmental Law Clinic. I'm here today representing the Madison Park Neighborhood Association to speak about this general plan update. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. As a community organization concerned with the health and well-being of Madison Park residents, MPNA is particularly interested in the environmental justice components of the new general plan update. As you heard in the presentation, state law now requires cities to include environmental justice considerations in these general plans. And a key tenet of environmental justice is the meaningful engagement of impacted communities. MPNA believes the city is failing to facilitate the level of community engagement that this process requires. The city released the draft EIR at the beginning of this month, and the deadline for public comment is September 16th. MPNA has been raising concerns about this process since mid-July and has specifically requested a delay of the comment period starting the day the draft EIR was released. In response, city staff has pointed to various community outreach efforts related to the general plan dating back to 2015. But the only environmental justice-focused outreach where residents could provide the city with input happened at two meetings on Friday, the 31st, and Saturday, August 1st. This was before the draft EIR was even available for review. The city has a community roundtable scheduled for August 31st, but it is only accepting 18 RSVPs at this point, which would likely exclude many interested residents. In addition to requesting an extension on the comment period, MPNA has raised other concerns, including issues with language and technology barriers that are prohibiting many residents from participating in the process. But like the extension request, these concerns have so far not been addressed. MPNA is not the only concerned party. Other residents and community organizations, as well as several city council members, have spoken on the record in favor of a delay or more robust engagement. But if the city is hearing MPNA's concerns, it doesn't seem that it is listening. The draft EIR is a massive technical document with over 2500 pages. A six-month comment period on such a critical document is simply not enough, and particularly during the ongoing COVID emergency. Not only is the pandemic hitting low-income communities of color, that is, environmental justice communities, the hardest, it is also exacerbating the language and technology barriers I mentioned before and putting increased demands on people's time in the form of additional childcare, homeschooling, or essential worker status. So, I'm speaking to you today so that you are aware of these issues and to respectfully address the commission. Can I just finish my final request here, and that's to ask the planning and building agency staff to slow down the public comment period and give everyone a chance to engage. It'll be worth it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your input. The second person, please.
Okay. Caller with the last three numbers, 477, please press star six to unmute yourself and state your name and your comment. Go ahead.
Yes, Dale Helbig again from Ward Three. My comments are related to the general plan process as well. And the fact that in the general plan update, there's no implementation plan except for the one on circulation. So, 11 of the circulation, 11 of the elements don't even have an implementation plan. There's no housing element to even look at right now. And the environmental justice portion is probably buried within the other 11 elements that we can look at, but it's not clearly identified what is the environmental justice issue that's trying to be addressed. So, hopefully that those can be flagged at a later date. Uh, there's no open space in the general plan update changes. Even though that there's a master park plan in progress, the general plan is supposed to be a comprehensive update and it should include the master park plan in it. You know, if it's a 25-year plan, hopefully we have plans for open space and those need to be addressed in the general plan update as well. This could be as simple as putting green belts in between the old and new development, similar to what New York City did with the line. It can be accomplished. The master, the general plan update doesn't seem to be looking at Senate Bill 1120, Assembly Bill 1279 or 2345, which are going to affect the city of San Ana. Slide 43 shows that FD property, the substation, is going to be changed to urban neighborhood. Post office will be changed to urban neighborhood. The developments in the drawings show that there's no 15-foot setback. Again, these are giving a bad image of what we're trying to propose. It's all high-density development. Slide 53 says the industrial flex area is going to have a 10-story office building right on the flight path for John Wayne Airport. Is that even possible? I don't know. So, I don't know who's addressing all these issues, but they've been brought up before and hopefully we get an answer. And like the previous gentleman said, we have time to review all this stuff before the deadline, especially seeing as how the material is not even available for us to do a comprehensive review of the general plan update. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Any other comments, Madam Secretary, in the public?
Yes. Caller with the last three numbers, 697, please dial star six to unmute yourself and state your name and your comment. Please go ahead.
Hi, the person?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello. Hi. My name is Jose Rhea. I'm the Madison Park Neighborhood Association treasurer and I've been a resident of San Ana for 37 years. Do you know that the city of San Ana has the dirtiest air in the entire county of Warren, according to the California EPA? And however, that dirty air is not distributed equally throughout the city of San Ana. In southeast San Ana, we have an industrial corridor that has dozens of industries that pollute the air and the soil and the water, according to the AQMD. And some of them are extremely close to school playgrounds. The latest addition was Graff Test, which is less than 1,000 yards from the playground at Kennedy Elementary and Madison Elementary. And these pools are really impacted by this pollution. And there's also residential areas that with no buffer zone between those polluters and the places where the people live. And we also have the Department of Toxic Substance Control doing cleanup. One in 1224 is Pomona, that it was also a metal trading company like Graff Test that polluted the soil and the water with typhroethylene, a carcinogen that creates a mother, besides cancer, like early abortions. And so, in this site, while it's being cleaned up, it's being polluted by a church. So, you know, I'm listening to your presentation, Mrs. Carvajal, and I see economic development. I don't see public health anywhere in there. And it sounds familiar, right? What is going on with COVID-19? But you know what? We breathe in the dirty air every day. And we want to see that as in the presentation of the new general plan. And so, I'm asking you to stop the development of this plan until you have very strong language addressing how are you going to clean up the air in San Ana, particularly southeast San Ana. So, I'm just, I'm speaking to you with that request. Delay the approval of this general plan as it is until the community from those 17 tracts and 21 neighborhoods are included in this public station. Thank you.
Caller, thank you.
Anybody else?
If you'd like to speak on this item, please dial star nine. Caller with the last three numbers, 713, please dial star six to unmute yourself and state your name and your comment. Please go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Leonel Flores. I'm a community organizer here in Ward Two. Thank you for taking my comments tonight. I'd like to start off by saying, I hope the planning commission listens to our request. Y'all are actually kind of giving me hope for the city as opposed to other city officials, especially when it comes, I was actually delighted to hear y'all ask about green space because this is something that's actually been lacking a lot in this general plan. So, I believe it was Commissioner Garcia asked if this has nightmare potential. And so, I want to talk about that nightmare potential because it actually has a lot. So, they talked about the increased population and they stated their estimate is that it'll increase to 430,000 people. I think they actually gave out false information unless the Census Bureau is wrong. But according to the Census Bureau, right now, the population of San Ana is roughly 332,000. So, that would be an increase of about 100,000 people, not 40 to 50,000, so almost double of what they said. Right now, San Ana is one of the most dense cities in California. And to top it off, we also have the top 10 percentage of worst air quality in the state, according to the California Environmental Protection Agency. So, to me, it doesn't make sense to be trying to bring in more people into a community that's already highly populated, living with polluted air. So, I would just like you to delay this general plan process, make them include strong wording in regards to environmental justice because, as you can see, they want to keep it very broad, so then they can't be held accountable. This was pretty evident last week at the city council meeting when they were talking about removing or decreasing affordable housing and the in-lu people developers. The mayor was very concerned that if too many restrictions were put, developers would not want to come. However, he also did not want to place any oversight committees to make sure developers follow the rules. So, I think it's important we put strong wording in there to address these green spaces and environmental justice. If not, the city is never going to act on this. And before I finish this comment, I would just like to
Caller, three minutes has arrived.
delay this process on the environmental plan and the general plan until it includes environmental justice into it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Caller?
Anybody else?
Yes, we do have a couple more. Caller with the last three numbers, 582, please dial star six to unmute yourself and state your name and your comment. Go ahead.
Hi. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Adolfo Sierra. I live in 516 South Occidental Street. This is Ward One. I'm represented by Distrito Sarmiento. I am the president of Madison Park Neighborhood Association, MPNA, and I've been involved with MPNA for over 22 years. And I'm here to speak about the city general plan update. As a community organization concerned with the health and well-being of Madison Park Neighborhood Association residents and adjacent areas, MPNA is particularly interested in the environmental justice component and so element of the new general plan. There's issues of health such as asthma on children's and other health issues. So, and Mr. Carvajal presented, I believe, his light duty eight, says they adopted focused areas. You are missing the industrial areas and we need, and we ask you to please consider including the elements of cleanup and phasing out this polluting industrial company. As you hear in the presentation from the planning and building agency, the state law now requires that the city includes the environmental justice on the general plan update. And one of the key elements is the engagement of the impacted communities, which is the community that I'm representing tonight. And as you know, the law per SB 1000 requires that the cities do that. The city released the draft program, the environmental impact report, at the beginning of this month, I believe it was August, either 3rd or 4th, I believe. And the deadline for public comment is only a few, a couple weeks from now, which is September 16th. And MPNA is raising a concern about these charges since mid-July. And we have specifically requested a delay of the comment period since the day of the draft of the EIR when it was released. But the only environmental justice-focused outreach that you were done is done on Friday, July 31st and a Saturday, August 1st, even before you release the EIR, the environmental impact report. You know, we not even have access to it at the time. You are planning a community roundtable scheduled for the end of this month, August 31st. But it's only, you are limiting the amount of residents and we see a very high number of interest residents on participating among other professionals. So,
Caller, three minutes is up.
So what I'm asking you tonight, yeah, let me finish. What I'm asking you tonight is to help us secure most more time, provide comments on the draft of the EIR, and ensure meaningful engagement through the rest of the process for the Santa Ana, that the Santa Ana environmental justice community is deserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
All right, we have one last caller. This phone number is private, so I don't have the last three numbers. But if you would like to speak on this item and you have not done so yet, please dial star six and state your name and your comment. Please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Mary Whiteneck and I'm a resident and small business owner here in Santa Ana. And I appreciate the fact that anytime we're doing planning and zoning, I understand it's a difficult, difficult process for everyone involved because humans have a hierarchy of needs, you know, starting with food, shelter, health. Many of those needs also rely upon solid, good jobs. And while I don't think any citizens of Santa Ana wants a major polluter, we do have to acknowledge that there is a balance between, you know, jobs and quality of life for people. So industrial jobs have provided some really good wage jobs for the people of Santa Ana for many years. I myself worked in a factory here when I was much younger. So I just wanted to make that comment on that. But I am concerned about the population counts as the gentleman brought up because you mentioned 115 additional housing units, but you say the population is going to only increase by 40 or 50,000. I live in a condo here in Santa Ana and we're already seeing large uptick in numbers of people trying to live in the residential condo units and they're not designed for the number of people. So I'm concerned that if you bring in more, you know, density, you're going to have more of that. So I'm concerned that the numbers may not be accurate. So I would ask the city really review that for actual number of people per unit. I would also ask, what is the time frame for these land use changes? Because I'm hearing from the city and from the planning commission that you have the support of the community. I'm a country girl stuck in an urban city. I am not for more density. I live in Orange County because I do not want to live in a city like Los Angeles. You know, I'm older, so has the city given any consideration to the older, maybe more high-income spenders in the city of Santa Ana that will leave when this density comes? And then what are the traffic improvements planned for the 55 freeway? The 55 freeway is a parking lot in the morning and it's a parking lot in the night, in the evening in prime work hours. Now, obviously with COVID, we haven't seen as much of that, but, I mean, that freeway is a parking lot and you guys are talking about putting all this density right along that freeway, which I live along. So I'm concerned about that. And I'm also concerned, when I see the improvement plan, I don't see anything for the portion along testing. I'm not sure if that's a good thing or a bad thing. But those are my questions and my concerns. I ask the city to consider them.
Thank you.
Chair, there are no-
Anyone else?
There are no other callers.
Okay, thank you. We'll keep the public hearing open for the time being and bring it back to the staff. Bernie, do you have anything you want to cover?
Thank you, Chairman, welcome. If I may just kind of conclude the presentation, there's a few more slides that we weren't quite wrapped up yet, but if I could just kind of quickly get through these, hopefully-
Thanks, Mr. President. Take your time.
Sure, sure. If we could just get slide 60 up, it talks about future planning commission sessions. Should be slide 60.
It's on, Bernie.
And, all right, so we wanted to share with the commission that there is opportunities for future planning commission sessions to discuss other elements that you may be interested in, specifically open space, which sounded like a key takeaway this evening, circulation being another, and then urban design as well. So we'd be open to, you know, sharing each of or all of these topics, or, you know, one or two of them, a future planning commission session at your, at your direction. And-
But, sure. Let me just, one thing, one thing I didn't ask is that, I know we talked about, there was discussion on green space and everything else, but the other thing is, you know, how is this new construction being brought about in respect to sustainability? And things that have to do with, you know, I'm going to use the term, not in this particular case, but lead type, you know, buildings that are energy efficient, all of, all of types of things that you would like to see in a future development. How is that being covered in the EIR and in the, in the general plan?
Right, so your question pertains to the, to the core value of sustainability. And if you look, you know, through out your document, you're going to find at this point goals and policies pertaining to that very item. But, you know, a possible implementation action could be to establish kind of a minimum threshold of, you know, certification. I know, I know there are different levels of lead for building construction, but, you know, that's definitely something we could strive for. We recently adopted the Green Building Code, which, you know, would be required as of this year, or last year. And then lastly, through zoning code policies where we could ask for, you know, additional green spaces through development standards, common open spaces and joint, joint opportunities. It could be, you know, ways that we could hope to address some of those issues.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman.
Vince, did you want to cover the next slide on the environment a little bit and then maybe talk about two of the key considerations?
Sure, thank you, Bernie. Mr. Chairman, funding commission, I'll take a couple minutes here to walk you through the other piece of the puzzle here. When you do a general plan update, you've also got to do an environmental analysis to analyze what the potential impacts are of this program. So what we have here that we've also sent out on August 3rd, the same day as the elements were released, was the program level EIR for the project. Now, what this EIR is doing is analyzing 20 different topics, everything from circulation to noise to land used to historic preservation. That's currently out right now for review. And very, just a very big, broad brush on this thing, what is identified was five potential areas of significance. And those are air quality, cultural resources, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, and population housing. As far as air quality, it basically says there's some unavoidable impacts during construction, as well as once these, if all these landings become operational, we don't comply with the air quality standards. Cultural resources, it listed it could be a potential loss of historic structures due to some future development. As far as greenhouse gas emissions, the state has these guidelines here that we have to comply with. And based upon the type and level of development, we may not meet the reduction goals that are identified. As far as noise, short-term noise impacts during construction, we know there's a lot of construction noise, either doing demolition or it could be any pile driving or any construction. So short-term noise impacts as well as potential long-term noise, the impact from traffic could be mitigable. And then finally, population and housing where there could be a potential, that these projects could induce substantial population growth. So surprisingly, traffic wasn't one of the issues that was identified as something that could be an issue with us here. So the EIR that you have before you there, just, we sent the link and we'll give you also a flash drive, has this kind of information on there for you. And one other piece here is that when you do the EIR at this magnitude, you have to identify alternatives. And the three alternatives that are being studied here in addition to the project we have before you is a no-project alternative, which basically is a no-growth alternative, just kind of leave everything status quo. A reduced intensity, so Bernie, you mentioned here there's some potential growth here. The reduced intensity would ratchet it back to about 70 to 80% of what we envision. And then the final alternative that we've analyzed is what we call a SCAD consistency alternative, which basically is a very minimal growth. You're looking somewhere around 10 to 15% in order to comply with the SCAD guidelines. So that's also in the EIR package that you have been sent out a couple weeks ago. And then just to kind of highlight one last thing and then I'll move on to the next slide is that the next meeting you have on the 14th of September, there'll be an item, a public hearing to receive public comments on the EIR. And then later on, either in September or in October, we'll be going before you with the actual request to make a recommendation to the city council on the EIR as well as all the different elements. So that is that slide. Thank you very much. So here's a slide that, again, we share with you at some one-on-one sessions we had. EIR and the elements were all released back two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago. We had a city council study session last week, had one tonight with the funding commission. We'll continue to have study sessions for this month and next month. And then we're targeting the adoption of the ordinance, excuse me, the elements, as well as the EIR sometime in fall of 2020. Next slide. And then a little bit here, a little bit of our outreach that's been performed so far. Experts and speakers talk about the outreach. We've done a lot of outreach since day one, since 2015, and again, we've had over 60 meetings, different types of outreach that have occurred throughout this whole process. Before the EIR and elements were released, we had two workshops, which had about 120 participants on those two workshops. Based upon the feedback that we received, Bernie is hosting another workshop at the end of the month to get more of that feedback from some key vocal, key interested groups in the city. And we'll continue to meet with anybody and as many times as possible that we need to in order to get that outreach concluded. We're also brainstorming other ways to reach out because we all feel that 120 participants over two meetings is not enough when you consider we're over 350,000 residents. So we're also looking at other ways to get outreach out to the community here to be able to get some feedback and input from our, from our community. Because again, it's not my document, it's not Bernie's document, it's not your document, it's a community document. So we wanted to be sure we hit all these groups here before we get this thing before the commission and council. And then the bottom of that slide had a few of the key takeaways that we heard from these meetings. Environmental justice, as you heard from our speakers, is critical, it's critical for them, critical for us. Look at the timeline in this COVID era. Find ways to increase community outreach and engagement. We're working on that. Working out ways to be sure they'll be hit all the different languages and all the different community groups. So we're looking at ways to reach out to all these different ethnic groups in the city. Transparency is always important. And then, as you heard also, open space as far as arts and culture and displacement. So those are some of the key elements that were heard at these community workshops. Last slide, next slide, excuse me, next slide. And then actually, that is the last slide. And then here's our webpage. If you want to go to our webpage and learn about the general plan, want to catch us an email, leave a phone message, and again, Bernie, myself, Melanie McCann, Min, we're all available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and planning commissioners. That concludes my presentation. Bernie, any other comments that you want to bring up?
No, I think, I think that was the intent to try to highlight some of those key takeaways from those workshops, so thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we'll see you, we'll see you in two and a half weeks, your next meeting for some more study sessions.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any additional questions or comments at this point in time? Commissioner Garcia.
I think having heard the public comment, I would just ask that we consider some alternative options for less dense housing in some of the areas that we're looking to develop further to, you know, improve. I really like the idea of green belts. I think they, you know, cities around us use that very effectively. Yeah, I think those are the two things that I would suggest that we take another look at.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all for me, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Morrissey.
Yeah, just quickly, I appreciate the presentation, the progress that's been made, seeing the, capitalizing on the opportunities in Southwest Plaza and connecting to the TUP legacy and recognizing of the gateways and connection opportunities. I do think that because of the recent events past six months, that we should strongly consider extending the public review and outreach phase, particularly when it comes to environmental justice. I'm hearing that that's an important facet of the general plan, that people need time to make their way through. So I'm hoping we have time to extend that. So, Mike, that's for today, thank you.
Commissioner Nguyen.
I suggest that the, that we should have the general plan update proposal, the update online, so make available to all the residents that have been able to review it, might have to take more time to review it, and also to have the input during this pandemic period. That's the end.
Okay. Commissioner Rivera.
No, no questions or comments.
Okay. Well, it's my, I guess my wrap-up is that, you know, I do agree with, I do agree with all the input of the commissioners I think we've got, but I think the other key thing is that, you know, I just have a hard time believing that we have to get this taken care of in such a short period of time. And I think that when looking at the numbers of people living in, living in Santa Ana, whether it be 330,000 or 380,000, whatever that number is, the amount of people that have gone through and participated in this general plan process is nowhere near a significant percentage of total population, number one. And I, and I think the other thing we have to consider is the fact that, you know, we've been, we've been working on a general plan that was started back in the 80s, or that was created back in the 80s and maybe modified it several times along the way. We're now looking at a new general plan that's going to give us a future of 15 to 25 years of what we think the vision of this city should be from a land use perspective. And I share the comments that we seem to be kind of railroading this thing through. And I think we should look at that and determine whether or not it's in the best interest of Santa Ana to do what we're doing. And with that said, Bernie, Vince, good presentation. Look forward to seeing the next round of presentations. And thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. I guess for sake of discussion, we'll also say that the public hearing is closed at this point in time.
Chair, just to clarify, it was just a public comment period, just for the record.
Yes, public comment, yes, thank you. All right, and with that, staff, do we have any questions or comments to be made at this point in time? No additional comments, Mr. Chair. Okay.
Chairman, I have one for you.
Okay, Vince?
One good comment is that we are renewing the APA membership for the funding commission. Some of you know that last year we had the American Funding Association membership for the funding commission, and it was brought up again recently, and so we've gone and are reactivating that membership for all seven of you. So Sarah and I will be reaching out in the next few days to get some information from you to be sure that you're properly registered for the American Funding Association. But congratulations and welcome to the team.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from staff? Okay, there you go. Commissioner Garcia, do you have any further statements, comments, or anything you'd like to make?
I just, thank you, everybody.
Okay, Commissioner Morrissey.
Oh, no further comments, just thank everybody for their hard work.
Okay? Commissioner Rivera, Commissioner Nguyen.
No further comments, just like to thank everybody for their hard work. Have a good evening.
Commissioner Rivera.
No, no comments.
Okay, again, just- Okay, again, just thanks to staff for providing that overview. And I think there's a lot of information that needs to be looked at here. It's all good information. We appreciate everything that you've said and presented this evening, and look forward to the next, next presentation we're studying on the general plan. I have no further comments. With that, we will adjourn the meeting at nine o'clock. And the next regular scheduled meeting will be Monday, September fourteenth at five thirty. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time and effort on this project, on this thing.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Good night.